Sound check for Laura.
I can hear you.
Mr. Harrington.
Dana, Dan.
Okay. Everyone's here, so I will call the July 27, 2022 Park City Planning Commission meeting to order. The notice of hybrid in-person electronic meetings reads, "The Planning Commission of Park City, Utah, will hold its regular meeting with an anchor location for public participation at the Marsack Municipal Building, City Council Chambers 445 Marsack Avenue, Park City, Utah 84060 on Wednesday, July 27, 2022. Planning Commission members may participate in person or connect electronically by Zoom or phone. Members of the public may attend in person or participate electronically. Public comments will also be accepted virtually. To comment virtually, use e-comment or raise your hand on Zoom through www.parkcity.org-publicmeetings. Written comments submitted before or during the meeting will be entered into the public record, but will not be read aloud. For more information on attending virtually and to listen live, please go to www.parkcity.org." Okay. Roll call, we have all commissioners present to attending virtually, and that would be Commissioner Seussir and Commissioner Johnson. So we have a full board. And next, we have Public Communications. If there's anyone from the public wishing to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. Okay.
I should defer to the former mayor. Anyways, this is really quick. First of all, congratulations, John. Thank you, I'm very fortunate to catch your last meeting and thank you for your service. My name's Mark Fisher. I was noticing that the gate at the top of Empire, the maintenance gate going to Red Cloud is not being closed at nights or on the weekends. And as I recall, when Somay Blanc was given its final approval, that was a condition of approval. And ironically, I think John actually said that was a red line in his mind. So I'm here just as a friendly reminder to see if that could be properly enforced. I did ask a police officer up there, and he says that's outside their jurisdiction and it would have to be done by the private developer. Right or wrong, that's what the gentleman told me. So that's my public comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dana Williams.
Welcome, Mayor Williams.
You don't have to be respectful anymore. So nine years ago, we interviewed this young man, and we're absolutely amazed at a commitment and a sense of honor about taking on a new job, and we were unanimous in our thought that you needed to be part of this board. I personally think this is the toughest job that you guys have of anything in the city, so much easier than council or mayor with all due respect. And, but a very tough job, you're the first line of defense for us, and I just wanted to tell you, you have done nothing but do this job with honor and respect for our town. And we made the right call, John, and so I appreciate all your efforts. I am proud to call you a friend, and I think we are a better town because you served, so thank you very much.
Thank you, that means a lot coming from you.
And I have a gig, so I'm leaving.
And I was his last appointment too, by the way, so I'm the last remaining appointment from Mayor Williams.
Looks a lot different from this side.
Welcome, Nan.
Thank you, Nan Worrell. And I would, I just couldn't not be here tonight, John. I was Chair of the Planning Commission when you were appointed, and I have to tell you, you hit the door running. The learning curve, as all of you know all too well, for Planning Commission is super steep, and John, you jumped on it. So I've had the privilege of working with you for nine years now. I've also had the privilege of watching your children grow up, and they're beautiful. So on behalf of the entire City Council, I want to express our gratitude for all of the years of service that you've done for Park City, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Nan. Okay. Let's see. Just checking to make sure nobody has their hand raised, okay, so I see no one else. I'll move on in the agenda to staff and board communications and disclosures.
Yes, I have one staff communication, and that is on October 24th, we will be having a site visit to the Bonanza Park area. It's mainly going to be looking at the Bonanza Park with regards to the Home Stake application that you'll be reviewing, but also there's a number of other applications in that area, so we'll take the chance to kind of just get familiar with the site at that time.
Is that at five?
That will most likely be at four, 3:30? Four o'clock. On the 24th. Okay.
Okay.
And, yeah, well, I would also like to just, it's hard to follow two mayors, but just like to thank John on behalf of myself and our staff and all the hard work you've put in. I think everyone on our staff feels really comfortable with you as Chair. I think you have a good rapport with everyone, you've been fair, you've been level-headed. You always come with sort of a nice sort of demeanor about you, and it's been a real pleasure for us to work with you over these, for me, a year and a half, but for some of the staff, three or four years. So really just want to thank you for your service and all your hard work.
Thank you, it's been great working with you guys too, and you, over the last little while, it's been, it's been good working with you. And I'm excited for the staff and you and the future of Park City and your hands. Okay? Anything else?
I'll go, I'm gonna just keep it on the same line and say, it has been so wonderful having you as our Chair and serving with you, and I agree with what's been said before, I do think this is a very hard job. I think being Chair is even harder, and you've done them both well, really well. So thank you, and we're gonna really miss you, and I feel selfish that we even begged you to stay on this long, but thank you for staying on so long.
All right.
I would just like to say, you know, when anybody comes on to any of these boards, to have mentors like you, like the Tims. I know that the new members, whoever they are that are coming on, are gonna miss having you two. You guys were incredibly gracious, and you were just so giving to all of us. Johnny, last but not least, thank you. You got us a pay raise from 10 cents an hour to 20 cents an hour. And you made sure we got paid. I don't know of anyone else that could have pulled that off. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, one of my best, my biggest accomplishments. And I'll just reply, I thought about the mentorship, because I do feel like I've done a little bit of that, but it's passed down, and I had mentors as well. And Bruce Erickson being my biggest mentor, I wanted to acknowledge his, what he did for me. And I also know that you guys will continue that tradition and welcome the new members on the board and help them on, because it is, it can be overwhelming, so, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll jump in quick too, thank you so much, it's made a difference having you, your help and answering questions and being there to chat with, and you'll be missed terribly. Thanks for all the years of service, and we'll be sad coming here without you for sure.
I'll be popping my head in once in a while.
Make sure you join us for a drink afterwards, after everyone's.
The fun part.
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to just take one minute to kind of respond to all of that, and in my thoughts, which I've had a lot of, I think, probably the most underestimated thing about serving on this board particularly, the amount of work it takes, obviously we all know, but what our families give up for us to do this job. And my children have, they've supported me through this whole process. They were very little when I, when I was appointed, but they've sacrificed, and I'm really looking forward to spending my Wednesdays with them, and they're gonna get all of me now. But also, all of the, all of us have families and people in our lives that also sacrifice, and I just want to acknowledge the people that don't get that acknowledgement. Our children, our spouses, whoever it is, you know, it's a team effort, and we all, we all willingly give ourselves to this. And for me, I did it for my children to provide a better community for them, and I think showing them leadership, they, they understand what I've been doing, and I'm proud to have been able to be a good example for them as well, so. But yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to acknowledge my children, because they are why I'm here too, so. So anyways, if there's nothing else along the lines of me in my last meeting, then I did have one comment I wanted to follow up on from the public comment portion on that gate being open, I know, I do recall that, and it was, it was a, it was a sticking point for me, and so I just asked that staff follows up and does whatever we can to, to follow through with what the commission's intent was on having that gate closed and only accessible for construction, I believe is what it was only, so. That's an important thing to follow up on. Anything else from the commissioners? Okay, all right, then we will move on into our regular agenda, work session items, which we have a couple of today. So the first item on the agenda is 1875 Home Stake Road, Affordable Master Plan Development, Conditional Use Permit, and very excited to see our first application come in under the AMPD section of the code that we worked hard on, and welcome you guys, and look forward to seeing what you have for us.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Spencer Colley with the Planning Department. I just have a few slides that I want to run through, and then we can turn over the applicant for a presentation. Just a quick summary of the project. There's proposed 123 units for this affordable master plan development in the Bonanza Park neighborhood. Eighty percent of those are deed-restricted affordable units, and 20% are market rate units. There is a breakdown in the staff report that shows which type of unit is affordable and which is market rate. So our proposed schedule moving forward with this project is August 24th, a 4:00 PM site visit. This will include the city engineer as well to answer any questions that you might have, and also to discuss future improvements to infrastructure and to the roads. Followed by that, the work session at 5:30 PM where we'll discuss traffic sustainability, building heights and setbacks. And September 28th, we will discuss, we'll hold a public hearing and have further discussion regarding the AMPD criteria and the CUP criteria. And then finally, October 26th, a public hearing and a potential final action or continued discussion. And I should include that on the August 24th meeting, we'll also talk about the substation as well. So there is requested input from the applicant regarding tonight's meeting. There is 6,416 square feet of amenity space, which has been proposed for many different uses such as child playroom, storage, bike storage, bike maintenance, or music rooms. So the applicant would like to discuss the uses with the commission tonight and to determine what uses are most appropriate for this project. The Rocky Mountain Power Substation adjacent to the property will, the Planning Commission Desire Expert testimony regarding health impacts of electromagnetic magnetic fields at the next work session, something to consider. And then finally, the applicant is proposing a wall to screen the substation from the project, potentially with a mural or some other device to make this wall more attractive, but also would like the commissioners' input on that as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Spencer. Karen Phillips, I, given I sat on that side of the dais, I just have to throw my two bits in as well, and thank you for your service for the past 10 years. It's been an honor.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the commission for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. It's a privilege to be here. I want to introduce, my name is Rory Murphy. I'm the lead on the project, along with Jay Fisher Company, represented by Ryan Davis sitting right behind me. Our architect is Jimso Onwekbu, who you guys have had a lot of experience with. We've been working closely with Jason and Peter Tomai and trying to come up with a project, a public-private project that is appropriate for the city, and hopefully we can move towards a master plan that everyone's comfortable with, that is, reflects the concerns of the city Planning Commission, as well as the neighbors.
Get a little feedback, whoever that's coming from.
Now, we realize as the applicant that we're, it's a sensitive matter for the city, because the city is both the applicant and the regulator. However, the Planning Commission is the deliberative body with this, and we recognize and respect that. We have had a lot of dialogue with city staff and a lot with city council, but right now, the, what is important is this body's interpretation of what we're doing, this body's concerns, and please rest assured that that is our primary focus at this time. Tonight, we're just gonna do a brief overview of the project, open it up to your immediate questions. As this progresses through the commission hearings, we will get into the CUP, the visuals of it, the colors, the everything. I will say that there was a widely circulated image of the project that came from Horox Engineering, and as Amy Roberts put it in her column, it looked like a rejected 1970s mental institution. That was not at all what we were representing. There's somebody plugged that in there, and I have answered for it, we have answered for it ever since. So please understand, this will be an attractive project, but we will get into that in a subsequent meeting. So Jimso, if you could show, what we'd like to show is the general location of the project. I think you're all familiar with it, it's a triangle-shaped project. What's interesting is it was an old rail yard, in fact, it was the rail yard, and what you're seeing there was the series of rails that came in and connected to each other. Go ahead. Brief overview, this has already been covered by Spencer, but 123 units total. The application is entirely within the Affordable Housing MPD. We are not asking for any variances to that MPD. The site considerations that made it a little challenging, it's a triangle site, that's not typically a perfect building site. There is a parking consideration that we need to discuss with the commission and get their feedback on. The immediate businesses and landowners surrounding us, they have concerns, and we'll get into those as this meeting goes on. The neighborhood and the community have expressed some concerns, and we'll cover those in detail later. And then the city has extensive infrastructure plans, particularly regarding Home Stake Road and Munchkin, that will affect this project considerably. The key affordability factors, this project is walkable to everything. The schools, the resorts, grocery stores, the restaurants, the bars, the entertainment area, hopefully the new Future Arts and Culture District, but this project is perfectly centered with this, in the, in the middle of the city. And that would include Old Town and Prospector and Park Ave and pretty much everything else. The transit surrounding it is very complete. You can go in any direction and access public transportation. We will have a public transportation element as well, but it, it has excellent transit access. The proposed HUD control program, which is really something that my colleague Ryan can best answer questions on, but this, you can, this project can and must, must stay as an affordable housing project for its duration. There's no games being played down the road where this suddenly switches to a market rate project. And the federal government is pretty clear about that, and given it's an IRS program, you just simply don't mess around with it. We are looking at long-term rentals only, there will be no short-term rentals in either any of the affordable or any of the market rate units. Brief Jay Fisher resume, they have 1,000-plus affordable units in Utah, 300 million in affordable projects, and 100 million in light tech equity projects. The current uses for the site are overflow parking for the residences around there, for the Kimball Art Center. For the businesses that are adjacent to it, there are three restaurants that use this property as overflow parking. It's an important consideration and one that we need to discuss with the commission and come to a reasonable conclusion on. Other than that, it has become a random storage area for everyone's stuff. We, there's even boats in there, there's all kinds of things. So it's just, it's an open parking lot, it's considered a safe parking lot where you're not gonna get towed or ticketed. And so what was interesting to us when we had some neighborhood meetings was, we had always thought that this was all parking from the condominium projects across the road. It's not the case. They're saying most of the trucks and cars there are not theirs, even the ones that are parked along the road. And so it's just an interesting phenomenon that this is an area where people are parking and leaving their cars long term. The brief progress to date, I don't think we need to go into it in tremendous detail, but there was a pretty rigorous selection process. Our group did end up getting selected by the city. And, you know, now for the first time, we're in front of you, the Planning Commission, and looking forward to this interaction. Brief resumes for everyone involved, nothing that needs to be elaborated on. The key stakeholders that we've identified and that we continue to add to are the claim jumper homeowners, the home stake owners, the adjacent business owners such as Jesse, Marion Charlie Windsor, the Penny and Derek from Blind Dog, the adjacent property owners, also Marion Charlie, Mark Fisher is a significant owner, Vale has a large piece of property there, and so does Utah Power and Light. Obviously, the Park City staff, the Park City Planning Commission, affordable housing organizations, and community advocacy groups. We had several meetings with the neighbors, they were reasonably productive. There was a lot of emotion, but the key input that I'd like to share, it's, I think our principal issue is parking, parking, and parking. Other concerns they wanted to share was they wanted no nightly rentals. It should be built for full-time residents only, they didn't want to add to the problems in town, and we agree. It has to be non-resort-based housing, this can't be rented out during Sundance or anything else. I do have two affordable housing projects in town, those are very important considerations. They're not meant to be winning the lottery, it's meant to be a place to live. Traffic is a significant concern. We are counting on the city's improvements to Home Stake and to Munchkin to mitigate that. It's a big part of our plan, and we, you know, that is something that, that needs to be addressed in that area. Right now, walking on that road, particularly at night, is unsafe. It's too narrow, when people park on that western side, it does create a bottleneck, and you have significant line-of-sight issues. So if I was walking with a dog or a child, I would be very concerned. The new plan, as the Park City Engineering Department has put forth, is a big eight-foot walking lane right next to the road. Considerable other improvements, and I'm sure they'll get into that in detail with you as time goes on. They were concerned that widening Home Stake would increase speeds, I tend to agree with that. But I think the most important consideration is having the pedestrian access. What they want to do as well is maintain that neighborhood vibe. Right now, it is one of the last working class neighborhoods in town and we need to keep it that way. It's a, that's where people that work live. And then they were all insistent on, as were we, with compliance with the LMC. We're not going to look for any variances. The size of the project was a concern. We were throwing out some pretty big numbers in the past. You know, we settled on 123. We'll see if that's something the commission is comfortable with. They were concerned about the length of time with construction. Fortunately, with our group, we have people that have considerable experience with larger projects and hopefully we won't take 10 years to build this if in fact it gets approved. There was general support for workforce affordable housing and that was provided it stays affordable. The people that lived around us did recognize that need. I was very impressed with that. They wanted to know that the city had enough water, that the city would communicate effectively with them. That we followed a path of general respect and communicated with them and treated them like the human beings that they are. And then the, one of the other concerns was the garbage plan. They didn't want them to be looking at the, nobody wants to look at the garbage. So that's going to be a challenge for Jim So as he moves forward with the design. The, they brought up the employee parking and the overflow to give credit where it's due. The restaurants do a ballet parking behind them and they generally park all of their people in that little area behind the boneyard, well, between Home State Road and the boneyard. They do a real good job and they stack them three, four deep. So it's, it's, they're, they are making a very strong effort to handle their own parking. That the transit plan be be real and be supported by the city. Again, the other party's parking on Home State and I don't know what the answer is to that, if it's a hang tag or what it is. But according to the people we spoke with, the vast majority of people that park on Home State do not live at either Home State condominium or Claim Jumper condominium. Our anecdotal evidence is we did see people park both on the street. You know, we spent a lot of time there just observing what's going on. There are people that certainly park there and on the street that access those condominiums. The, and so there's, there's certainly some use there, but what they're maintaining is it's actually not the majority use. Very supportive of bike and e-bike stations. They did emphasize the need for a greater degree of parking enforcement. I wanted to make sure the snow storage didn't end up in their front yards and that there was no operational noise. The very brief kind of look at what the city engineering department is planning for that is the Home State improvement and then also a connection to Munchkin that essentially runs through the recycling center right now. The properties surrounding us, just so everyone's clear and so that they know that we understand it, at least on a cursory level. We have Charlie and Mary Windsor's property to the south. That is about six acres, six and a half acres. To the east is the substation. The east is also Vale's lot there. We have the recycle center sort of to the northeast. Home State and Claim Jumper to the west. The yard is to the north, kind of northeast, and then that art, the arts and culture district. Depending on what happens there is not directly adjacent to the property, but certainly proximate. Studies to date, we've done a lot of stakeholder engagement, tried to do a lot of community neighborhood engagement, geotech, environmental. We've gotten to phase one, waiting for the phase two study to tell us exactly what we have. Of course, done an ALTA, traffic and parking, cultural resources, massing and yield studies, historical use and research, title reports, and we've engaged with the city for a number of their departments. The environmental, in brief, the general tailing stream that affects lower Prospector bypassed this property on the east. This is according to the environmental director at United Park City Mines Company, who was the, the party involved. The primary use was stock, stockyards and rail, stockyards and railroads. The stock animals would have contaminated material on their hooves and the railroads would occasionally lose stuff off the sides. So the general consensus, and we will know after the phase two, is we have 12 to 24 inches of contaminated material on the top that will need to be mitigated. The very important thing and which I'm very grateful for is we have no tailings. At least that we know about right now. The existing parking conditions, there are typically 30 to 40 cars, many of them with trailers on site at all times. It can get up to 60 on a Friday, Saturday evening. I went there July 4th and counted 72 cars. So just to give you an idea of what the peak might look like, and it is a mix of residents, workers, patrons and others. The floor plan analysis, we're going to blaze through because there's a lot of detail there and I'm sure you guys will take your own time looking at it. But it, our plan is just lots of ones and twos and a few threes. We are taking advantage of the fourth floor or we are posing to take advantage of the fourth floor that the AM MPD offers. That's basically what we're proposing. Don't want to get into the nitty gritty. I'm sure you guys have had some time to think about this and we are here tonight to absorb all your questions. If there are questions that can be answered on the spot, we certainly will, but really we want to take your input, do our research and get back to you in the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything you want to start with?
I'm sorry, could I add one last thing?
Absolutely.
I did have some conversations today with Jesse Shetler, who owns the Boneyard and Wine Dive, as well as Mark Fisher, who owns the majority of property to the north of us. They are concerned about blocking the view of the stage. And this is as recently as today, these conversations, blocking the view of the stage of the mountains with our building, that that was raised as a concern. Another concern that was raised was that if we, even though we are fulfilling the parking requirement as per the code and we're not asking for a reduction, they have concerns that units may have extra cars and where are they going to park? Well, they're going to park in their parking lot. And, and I think it's a legitimate concern. I don't know the answer to that right now, but I did want to bring that up as something that we heard about as recently as this morning.
Okay, thanks.
I guess, sorry, you want to start down there?
Go ahead, Sarah.
No, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so first I'm excited that this is the first item on the agenda for JP's last meeting because we feel like we've been talking about this for so long. So I'm excited that we finally have an application to at least like run through it too. That's exciting. I'm also really excited because this is 80% affordable units when the code only requires 50% to qualify for the affordable MPD. So that in itself is also going above and beyond. So I'm excited. Also love when staff gives us direct questions, especially in a work session. So I'm just going to run through those real fast and then I'll get to a couple of other things. All the uses that were currently proposed on your list, great with the playroom, bike storage, bike maintenance, music rooms, great. I'm also okay with commercial uses because even though they're not financially viable now, if at some point in the future they were to become financially viable, I would see no issue with a coffee shop or an Is 2.0 or whatever was initially proposed before it became a financial issue. Then I don't have a strong background in EF, EMFs, but I'm going to rely on what the city has already done and what the applicant has proposed and say that I don't feel that additional expert testimony or, sorry, a report is necessary. Great with the wall for the mural for the substation. Going on to some other random parts that were not specific questions. Are these proposed? And I couldn't actually find it and I was kind of skipping through again. Are we selling, or sorry, is the, are these units all to be sold or are they to be rented?
To be rented.
Okay, so, and then for the nightly rentals, do you have a proposed no nightly rental definition? Because that definition has changed even here. So is it 30 days? Is it 60 days, 90? And you don't need to know, but that will be something that I will look to have a specific definition on the no nightly rentals.
Sure, this is Ryan Davis and High Commission. The answer that directly, we have a minimum 12-month lease structure. So, and we do not allow sublets. So this is part of the Utah Housing Corporation requirement. So it'll greatly exceed any kind of short-term rental requirement.
Fabulous. And then I would be interested to explore how, I, I agree with you completely that a parking reduction would be within the LMC and, or would comply with the LMC. And that this specific property, because of its walkability, would be a specific reason to have a parking reduction. So, but interested, you know, the 12-foot multipurpose walkway and the eight-foot one on the western side and just really the bike storage, like the full package. I'm excited to talk about that because I do realize that even though it's more than one stall per unit, that people who live in two units may also have two cars. So how are we doing a condition of approval that says you can only have one car or I don't know? And then I see that the open space is 32% and the code does allow it to go down to 20%. So in terms of the public comment about the height, which would be allowed as not an exception to the LMC, but what isn't allowed height. If we were to have some areas, maybe three-story, I would also be open to expanding the footprint because of the open space and there's no setback violation. So I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but that would be something that I personally would be okay with, is either allowing setback reductions or there's still wiggle room within the current allowed open space percentage and still be within the LMC without an exception. And then this is kind of along the lines of like something that I'd like to talk with staff or about general MPDs and having like a sunset clause. And we've kind of talked about this like casually, and this isn't about your specific project. It's just about all MPDs because we're seeing MPDs from 30 years ago now. And if there's some way to put some sort of sunset clauses, so hypothetically, if this is not approved and in 20, 50 years, or sorry, it's not built, but it's approved, but the, a much later commission is not bound by what we decide. And that's kind of like something I would generally like to talk about. Those are my things.
Okay. I'm, I'm curious on that sunset. I had this conversation recently. Is there a way to, to do a sunset on an MPD?
Mark, I'm in senior city attorney. You, you, we do have that in the current code. So it's two years unless you affirmatively extend it by phasing plan. And then that's built into the development agreement. Now, where that gets nuanced though, is multiple phased, large scale projects where there's partial or most performance, including on the public dedications and when you, when you get three quarters of the way through, and it's usually the last phase that doesn't set sunset if there's been substantial performance. So it's really something that the commission can address on, in each phasing plan and, and should as, as you get those proposals through for your consideration. But you, you can, you can look at the back end of that. With, you know, you've had public interest in doing the opposite as times as such as this on a potential brink of a recession. You do get, get increased requests for increased flexibility on the 180-day building rule, the two-year expiration and so forth. So, you know, like everything, it's a balance and, and, but ultimately it's hard coded at two years unless you approve a phasing plan, at least that initial startup. And then again, on the, gets more complicated the larger the project is.
And it, the two years is more on the actual approval of the approved plans, is that correct? Is it the?
It cuts both. It's the master plan development.
Okay, okay. So it is.
It is your approval.
Okay.
And then to stay active with approved plans, they need to stay active 180 days at a time through the building.
Right.
Department.
Okay, who else would like to go?
I'll start. I'll, I'll jump in, John. Commissioner Sueser here. So just a couple of quick questions that I hope can get clarified. I'd like to hear from staff regarding the, the city's plans for the Munchkin road expansion because I'm not familiar with exactly that, what that looks like and the impact that will have on, on this development and any, any plans for the recycling center and the changes to that would be helpful in analyzing this. Also, I'd like, I'd like, I'd like staff to go back and talk to parking enforcement and get an understanding of who's parking on Home State long-term and enforce you know, some parking restrictions along that road so that we can get on top of that issue if there's a problem going on there. Okay, then going through the staff report. I have a concern about the, the ambiguity of the deed restriction being a minimum of 50 years or the length of the ground lease with Park City Municipal. I'd like clarification if, 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 if we're going to, is it good, which is it? And I would, I would be in favor of a, the length of the ground lease with Park City Municipal, I believe, unless I'm I, I think that's, I think it should be determined which, which that is. Okay. And I'd like to see what the ground lease looks like if, or how long the length of the ground lease is. I'm not in favor of reducing the open space. I'm kind of disappointed at, at what's proposed actually in the plans. I, I would like to see more of it in this project. I'd like to understand what the net zero aspects are for the project that was referenced in the sustainability section of the staff report. I like the, the, the proposed uses that were in the staff report. They all sound good to me. They sound, all sound appropriate and I'm all in favor of those. And I, I'm in favor of the, the wall. I was kind of curious about who would be paying for that. No, that wasn't a joke. And let's see. Oh, about the EMFs. I'd like to say that I'm comfortable with the research that's been done. The research that I've personally done on that issue is also come out the way, it sounds like the city and the applicant have come out. So I, I agree that we don't need expert testimony. If, if, however, if we get feedback from the community and there's a significant number of people that would like to hear about any potential health impacts. I'm open to having someone come in and provide that testimony if there's a public request for it, but I will, or, or other commissioners request for it, but I'm not going to request it based on my understanding of it and, and the research that the city's done. Okay, and I went through the applicant's letter and I just have some comments and questions as I went through that. So I'm just scrolling through to figure out what. And the, the staff did impose this question, but the applicant seems to have, it seems to be very focused on, you know, what existing uses. Um, um, the planning commission wants to retain on that site in terms of parking. And that's a, that's a pretty big topic and a tough one to tackle. Um, I'm going to leave that to the end. Um, of my comments. Then there was a traffic study. Um, there's a traffic study. Um, mentioned in the applicant's letter to staff, and it says that the traffic study should be completed by June 2022. So I'm wondering if we have that yet. Um, with regard to the environmental issues, the 12 to or I, I heard 24 inches today. I think it said 12 to 18 in this letter to staff. Um, I'd like to understand if um, is, if the developer is going to be able to absorb the cost of transporting any trend and, and contaminated soils. Um, um, off site. Um, or if that's, if that kind of expense is going to um, fall to the city. Um, given this private, public nature of this project. So I would like some clarification of that. Um, let's see. I'd like confirmation that the sidewalk on the west side of uh, uh, home stake is part of this project and not just the 12 foot wide path. Um, it was there seemed to be, um, the, the sidewalk wasn't mentioned in the staff report, but it was mentioned in the developers, in, in the applicant's paper, uh, letter. Um, I would also agree with Commissioner Hall regarding the uses, going back to the uses, the, um, I agree that um, if, if commercial uses. Um, uh, if, if, if the, the cost of including those commercial uses in the building, I would like to, I think a coffee shop or some like, just like Commissioner Hall said, I would agree with some commercial uses in this, in this development. I'd be, would be in favor of that if possible. Um, see. Um, with regard to the AMF, I'd like the applicant to show us that, that the, the it says something about the substations that are wrapped in EMF insulators. And if we could get a visual or a better understanding of what that looks like, I think that would be he- helpful in sort of, you know, quelling some of those concerns. Um, um, uh, Mr. Murphy said something about the height of the building possibly blocking the view of the mountains for some stage, and I wasn't clear on what stage he was referring to.
Um, rooftop stage at the boneyard. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It is the backdrop.
Okay. Okay, that covers my comments. Thanks.
I can jump in. So quite a few of mine have been covered by Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Sueser. Um, I do agree that I don't think we need expert testimony on the Rocky Mountains, on the, the EMFs for the substation. Um, I agree also with the commercial space. If there's a way to use, utilize the first floor as some commercial space. I think one thing, um, you're planning for uh, like a kids area play zone, something like that. Um, even one step further would be amazing. Another daycare down there as a possibility. Um, since we're so short in the city and this is going to be hopefully a spot where there are younger, hopefully families living there. Um, I think that would be an amazing addition if at all possible, but I also understand the constraints um, financially. Um, I would love to see the improvements around the area that are coming from the city. I think that a connection from this area to like Poison Creek and all of those need to be well established. And there needs to be a really good plan for those because if that's what we're planning for people to be using, we need to make them accessible and have um, the areas around there, the Windsor properties, all of those kind of having some greater plan um, for connectability. Um, especially for walking and biking through there. Um, I bike through there often and it is not safe um, right now at all. Um, in addition to that, what was said earlier was the, I guess, the staff and the city's views on how that lot is currently being used as the overflow lot and what, what is the plan? I mean, these guys have the right to develop it and what, what, what is our grand plan for moving these people around? Um, I am okay with the way they have it parked as long as um, there is another plan by the city or just at least the thoughts from staff of what happens to these people. And a better idea of who is parking there. And it sounds like Mr. Murphy took the time to spend time there and see all the parking, but okay, who is using it then? And I don't know how we find that information out, but I think it would be really useful to get even um, deeper into that. Um, looking forward to seeing the traffic study. Um, and I think that is the majority of my notes. If I think of anything else, I'll jump in after John again.
Okay, so to, to go to the central question in answer Commissioner Van Dyne. The central question being asked for us regarding the parking is those uses for the overflow on claim jumper condominiums, the other condominiums, the restaurants and bars overflow. And um, the employee parking for HPCA. You mentioned the occupancy you had while you walked the property. That in past winters where HPCA was using that, I believe there was 200 parking stalls used and shuttled 200 plus parking shot stalls used and shuttled. So the question asked in your letter to Gretchen was what does the planning commission wish to retain or accommodate? If any, and I definitely want to see how they're being accommodated. Clearly 220 spaces are not going to be retained on that site and have any kind of financial liability, but we have to be honest and, and the employees that are coming in there. I'm all for it. I am all for employees. As you know, I'm an employer here in Old Town. So I'm and, and we have a big issue with employees. So we want to make this work. Key word again is balance. How are we going to balance this? And we can't, we can't lie about the numbers and say 50 or 60. We, we use 200 spaces to shuttle in years past in the winter on that lot and, and in there. So we've got to, we've got to address the real numbers as Commissioner Van Dyne was, was just indicating. The P word is always the trouble. I'm going to come back to it. The proposed uses are, are really good. I think the neighboring plans and the uses hopefully will enhance the quality of life for the people. Is the uh, recycle center move, is that um, is that contingent before the COO? Or is that a completely separate issue? I think Commissioner Sueser was trying to ask about that. Does that road have to be dedicated and completed before your COO?
I don't think that uh, that, that's a prerequisite, but it needs to happen uh, at least concurrently.
I would want it to be. I would want it to be. I would not want that half acre, which is overflowing to be there because once again, I'm going to go back to the quality of life. What you're doing is you're giving people an opportunity to live here, to work here, to help on many levels. But it doesn't work if you're, if they don't have a quality of life. So let's go to the occupancy. I know the AMIs and I know all the fun stuff and check the land management court. But I do want to see that these amenities in town and surrounding them are beneficial. And I don't think it's appropriate to have that recycle center remain there. I think we have to address the recycle center. It is something we've talked about forever. And it's another one that we, we, we need to accomplish right now with, in sync with this. Okay? Um, occupancy per unit. Help me out. Three bedroom. What's the maximum occupancy on a three bedroom?
Um, so it would, it's typically two occupants per bedroom is.
Two per bed?
Yeah. So we would be looking at six on that. And there can be exceptions for dependents or disabled or um, in, in home caretakers.
Okay, so we're going to have a maximum occupancy on the building based upon the unit and the type of occupants in there if they're special needs.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm going to look for that. I'm going to look for that because remember it always comes back to the P word. And depending upon how many people you're going to have in there and how many bedrooms you're going to have there. We're, we're going to have some parking. We're going to have some parking issues. And you know, as the number I just gave you for Old Town employees, it's, it's, we're, we've, you know, adjusted the affordable MPDs and we've been generous and now we, we need to hold it so that there is balance. There is balance remaining in this thing. So the central question is yes, we do want to see how everybody's accommodated there. Um, or I do. Um, what else? The soils and environmentals. Yeah, I think we just have to go through the process as you're doing in there. Um, the traffic, of course, we need a traffic study, MPD, and we'll be looking for that. And it's just the way I would just hope that you would look at it, that there's, it's not just how many people we can put over there. But how can we provide them a quality of life? And, and we lose that sometimes when we just do the checklist. And I do think this is a location and the neighboring developments that are all there give us that opportunity. And I want to take advantage of that opportunity. And yes, the original plans did look like a prison. So we're looking forward to look a lot better.
They, they weren't our plans.
Okay. Last but not least, I want to ask Mark how he's defining recession. I'm kidding, Mark.
Loaded.
And uh, just
Okay, proceed.
And briefly, the parking study was done about mid-June. We did submit that to the city. And I guess for whatever reason, it did not make it into this packet. So my apologies and maybe it's just a miscommunication with us and the staff. So.
I'm, I'm sure we'll have plenty of meetings to go over.
Yeah, this is
We wanted to leave it for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would assume. We don't want to go too far without all the information.
Always leaving the one at war.
Um, let's see, Commissioner Johnson, do you have any additional comments?
I can just run through my list if that's all right.
Yeah.
Try not to repeat what the other commissioners said. I'll, I'll run through the, the checklist real quick. Uh, the uses, I'm all for all of those uses. I would stress if you're gonna, if we're going to end at this the proposed parking, I would stress like interior bike storage and storage at affordable units. Um, that's something that existing affordable units struggle with. And I think e-bikes are growing popular and uh, that storage is, will be important to make that successful, I think. So it's just that. Uh, the EMF, I, I was told that there's an EMF report being prepared. Is that correct? Or has there been one prepared?
Uh, no, there's no uh, formal report prepared. Uh, we took a deep dive into that commissioner and we came up with dozens and dozens of sources, all of them pretty credible. Um, and uh, we did locate a local expert who is um, really, really knowledgeable about the subject. And if you guys would like, we're, we would be happy to bring him here. And if, if this becomes an issue of any concern. Uh, but we hadn't, we, we did do an EMF study and that was in the exhibits to the narrative. Uh, and it's the readings that we got, which were from a third party. Uh, the, uh, were, were dramatically low. It really uh, was, was a, a non-issue based on the uh, study that we did. But we'll go as deep as you'd like, Commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I, I'm very familiar with this in the industry I work in. Um, but I do think a report would be um, advantageous for us. I think it's important to get a formal report so that we have that for any, you know, future reference. I don't think they're very challenging to get. Um, just from like, say, the closest EMF transmitting to the closest unit on the building. I mean, ideally, I'd like to go from each floor and what it's, what it's reading at that level. Uh, just so we have it. I don't need expert testimony by any means. Um, but I think a formal report would be beneficiary. Uh, but if the other commissioners don't, you know, agree with that, uh, I respect, I respect what's been presented.
I agree.
Uh, and then I think the wall was the last one. And so I apologize. I am kind of out in the field. So I, I read the packet. Is this a proposed, is the, is the wall 20 feet high?
Well, that's a good question. Um, I put down 20 feet high because I sat there with my thumb and, and did it that way. It can be, you know, 15 feet, it can be 25 feet if you want. And what was brought up by staff, and I think it's a legitimate question is, well, you know, you need to engineer that. It needs to be safe, et cetera. And really, the entire purpose of the wall was to visually block the substation from as much of the building as we could. You, you're never going to block it from the upper floors.
Right. But that wouldn't carry through to, you know, say the um, the property line with the Windsor property. I'm sorry, can you guys hear me? Okay? Am I not talking loud enough?
We can hear you fine.
Uh, yeah, I guess I, maybe you guys could show me really quick. And perhaps it's on the plans, but just kind of pull up a slide and show where the wall is going. Is it just going along that substation? Or is it going to carry along, along the Windsor's property as well?
We, we hadn't planned for it to continue along that entire stretch, but there is the one smaller substation that's closer to the triangle property that we wanted to block. Um, but really it's uh, pretty much up in the air. If, you know, I, I, it's really going to depend on uh, what the commission would like to see there, what the staff would like to see there. And, and how big they would like it to be.
Okay.
We're, we're not going in with any, you know, preset ideas on, on what this needs to look like.
Right, okay. I, I, I'm looking forward to that. I think that can be, you know, that's, I'm looking forward to more details on that. Um, I think most of the commission touched on other items, I think. Let me just run through my list if you guys don't mind. Yeah, the traffic study, looking forward to that. I like the open space as is. Um, I think that's it. I just, I guess I had a question for um, Director Milliken on the adjacent the Windsor Wolf uh, proposal that was before us. Is that, is that application withdrawn? It just seems advantageous to kind of look at both of those together, but if it's withdrawn, then uh, it's not relevant. I just was curious. Is anybody?
Um, it's not officially withdrawn. It potentially is coming in front of you in the future.
Okay.
Rory, are you involved on that?
I am. Um, it's been a few months now since Charlie and Mary.
Yeah, and I don't expect, you don't have to answer like what's going on with that application by any means.
Um, I think the point I was
I don't want you to feel like you got to answer to that application. I, I was just curious. To me, um, it would seem that you, at least you're aware as, as you're working on this, you, you kind of have an idea. But I agree with Commissioner Johnson. It would be advantageous, but obviously we can't force um, that to be the case.
Yeah. And then the last question I had, sorry. Um, I don't know who to direct this question to, not, probably not the applicant, but the intersect, I guess this will be included with the traffic study, but the intersection of Kearns and Home Stake. Because that's um, U dot row there, what kind of like, what kind of how can that uh, intersection be improved? What are our restrictions and kind of? Uh, I, I, I don't really know how I want to ask this question. Um, I guess I just have a concern with that intersection, you know, improving and if we have any restrictions in that particular area.
Right, and just the coordination with U dot and uh, or, or difficulty in coordinating with U dot. I, I understand your question and uh, we'll come back to you with answers at the next meeting.
Okay, perfect. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, and that's it for me for now, John. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, I'll, I'll, I'll go last. I, I agree. Uh, I agree with the commissioners on, on pretty much everything that's been said to this point. Um, going back to Commissioner Johnson, you had kind of asked us if we agreed on the AMF report. I do. That was in my notes. Um, I think just having that for the record and Um, I think just having that for the record and staying ahead of that is gonna be better than playing catch-up later on. Uh, in regards to that, I was also curious, uh, I probably just have a few questions. In your stakeholder meetings, um, I I'd be curious to to know. What dialogue you've had with Utah Power? You know, to what extent are they're aware of all of this, I'm sure? Uh, if they have any concerns and also, you know. Do, you know, I recall when they were coming in years ago. This very property was part of the discussion of uh, the uh, upgrade. They were going to, they were using eminent domain and we're coming in and they were gonna, they were basically saying they had to upgrade that power station. And so I, all all I would say is is that, you know, as we as we go through the process is to keep in mind. That that power station may someday be upgraded and what would the impacts of that be? So, well, you know, and I I doubt that Utah Power is gonna tell us what they have planned um, for the future.
Uh, of all the agencies we contacted, the, I wouldn't say they weren't cooperative, just not responsive.
Yeah, they're not gonna, they're not gonna tell us what they, you know.
Yeah, we we did better with the federal agencies and and others, you know, than we did with them.
So just something to keep in mind, though, is is the potential is there for a future upgrade, you know, it is the substation to Park City and Park City's growing and, you know, uh, it there. They came in back then saying that they absolutely had to, there was no way around it, they had to upgrade that power station. And this was before I was even on the commission, I was just involved as a citizen. We went through the whole process. Mister Fisher here remembers, um, because he was very involved in that. And afterwards, they, you know, it was a very painful process for for everyone involved and. We all thought they were gonna come in and blow the thing up and build it bigger and months later, they just said, oh, never mind, we don't have to do that. But that doesn't mean that it's not coming again someday, so just something to, just something to consider. And even when we build this screen screening wall, you know. Wha- what's the life? What's the 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 life term of that wall? And, you know, is it gonna have to be upgraded as well if the Utah Power does something? And with that screening wall, I would say, you know, balancing. Uh, screening, you know, for as many units as you can, looking directly over there. I'm not, I'm not entirely concerned, that's part of, you know, just living there. I mean, it's it's your neighbor. Um, but but again, it is, it would be good to screen it so that people don't have to look at that, but also balancing that with the visual impacts from. Uh, the surrounding areas, obviously, is gonna be, to me, a bigger concern. Someone moving in there is aware of what they're moving into where, you know, where you're putting it on the neighbors or someone else, that's a different story. So, and I feel the same way with the E M Fs. You know, back then, those conversations, it was a big part of those conversations and when the uh, the power station is being proposed to move across Bonanza. And but in that situation, it was being moved into and it would have directly impacted uh, new neighbors, right? And it was a a new, it would have been a new impact, so it's a different conversation. Where this is. We are the owners and we know what we're we're moving into, so. I'm not as, I'm not as concerned, but obviously, I think it's gonna be, you know, it'll be one of the topics, I'm sure, and we'll get, I'm sure we'll get public comment from it as well. Yeah, and 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 for me, the more information we can have on. You know, the overall plans for that the city has through those neighborhoods, the more information we can have, it's gonna better inform us. You know, I know in uh, the private sector, if, and and this, and it's not the case here, but I believe. Um, we dealt with this also in the past where if you are doing an M P D and you own neighboring adjacent properties. Then you you kind of need to give an idea on what your future plans are for those properties. Well, here, the city owns, you know, a lot of the neighboring properties, because we own the roads and we know, we own all that stuff, so. Not that you have any control over that, um, it would be more just turning to staff just to inform us as much as they know. Um, to help us better understand how this is gonna fit into the future. Um, plans for that neighborhood and understand that those plans are still being formed. Uh, let's see, uh, you know, I think having, yeah, the, you know, the storage, you know, just the quality of life, as J K had mentioned, is really important. To balance that and make sure that we're not just, you know, stuffing people in here, um, and and. I trust that you guys are keeping that in mind. I I I'd love to have commercial, I could understand why it wouldn't work. Um, you know, uh, I was gonna ask the question of giving me a little bit more background on that, but I. I I don't think I need that. I understand the the implications of having commercial in the project. I I, you know, uh, the upgrade of the classification and all of that. And so, you know. Uh, I I can accept that. I agree with the other commissioners on what the staff had. Directly asked. And what else do I have here? Uh, I guess a bit, you know, one of the other, the other things that I would be curious to know would be. Well, how, wherever the parking ends up in those conversations is. You know, most importantly is how is that regulated? Is there gonna be a site manager? Which I assume there would be on a project of the side, you're gonna have someone that's there managing the property. Um, but having that kind of laid out to give us, you know, an idea of comfort in how. How you regulate how many cars each unit has, I know that's all gonna be in the language and in place, but just making sure that it's all spelled out well so that. Uh, it's clear and and easily enforceable too. And again, that depends on where those conversations lead on the amount of parking. I think it'd be key to have a e-bike station there, you know, and all the other. Uh, things to mitigate the the parking issues and getting people to use the multimodal transportation. Um, you know, and it is in the transportation corridors, there's a lot of stops nearby, so I. I'm supportive of where you guys are uh, starting off on on um, the overall application and I'm sure. The details will all get flushed out and you guys will have fun. I won't. I'll have fun watching. That's all I have. And and then, um, I did want to uh, just. Check and see, I I would on this, on this particular application. Uh, I would be open to uh, giving limited public comment if there's anyone um, that. Has anything that they'd like to add at this stage, um, I don't. I, you know, I don't know if there is, so. Um, but I would take one or two comments if anybody has anything uh, that they would like to add. And I know Mister Fisher, I, you know, I I saw you out there too, and I know you're very familiar with these properties, because you were the previous owner.
Yes, I bought this property in two thousand and five. And and from Kearns Boulevard to the back where the triangle is. And in two thousand seventeen, sold it to the city. Um, the first thing I'd say about the parking on Homestake, because we've dealt with this for over a dozen years, it is the people in those apartments. And because there's a lot of density in those apartments. And so that overflows them into our lot, but we worked well with our neighbor. But for them to say that it's not their cars, I believe would be a bit disingenuous. That's my feedback on that. I I told Rory, who I've known for twenty years, I'm gonna support him on this project. I'm gonna help do anything I can when I sold this property to the city. I knew this was gonna happen, I want it to happen. Um, a couple of observations, um, are, I think you picked a great partner here. Um, but the elephant in the room and the reason I sold this property is. At that point, all the soil had to be taken to Toilla, not just the 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 soil that's contaminated. Which makes building an underground parking lot essentially not feasible, so I'm curious, this is more of a question to the city. Has that changed? I hope it has, because this is my informal comment off the record, I don't believe there's more than four to six inches of contain contaminated soil. We did all the boring studies in two thousand and six and seven. So the idea of twelve to twenty-four inches seems preposterous to me, which is a good thing. And I've always believed that the clean soil should be allowed to go wherever it needs to go nearby to make it as economical as possible. Next point, there's gonna be a tremendous amount of sewage coming out of this massive building. I have concerns it could affect my property in terms of backing up, because we've had backing up issues over the last fifteen years. So I I believe Homestake. And Munchkin need to be completed before this building gets a C O, because it would be awful if we accidentally created a sewage problem. If you think about two hundred and fifty people being added to the system. So I strongly think that Homestake must be built by the city at a minimum, because that's the key artery for these upgrades, as I understand it. To build this building and to open this building with those roads. As they are, I don't think will work, and I'm just trying to be helpful, because again, I'm supportive of this project. And I also want to see the developer be successful. A couple of other quick things. I was surprised, because I was expecting a thirty-five foot height, so I'm absorbing the idea of a forty-five foot height with a five foot. For utilities on top of fifty-foot building. That's the comment we were referring to earlier when we were talking about the view from the Boneyard, because it's instead of looking at the mountains, we will look at this building. I'm not gonna oppose that, I'm okay with it, I understand the need, but that's why we were a little surprised. On the E M F issue, I went round and round on this in two thousand twelve and thirteen, it was decided that it was just an unknown. So I I would just recommend that the city and the developer have each tenant in their lease sign a liability waiver. To protect against lawsuits. The parking south of the extended Munchkin. Uh, what will that be? So when Munchkin comes in, there's gonna be at least a fifty-foot strip of land between Munchkin and the wall of the substation. Um, I'm hoping that's gonna be parking to address some of the concerns of displacement that you all have talked about. But it's very important to know what's gonna go on that strip of land. I believe in conjunction with John's comment about getting rid of the so, the recycle center for a quality of life issue. I'd like to see a mural on the north side of the substation facing Kearns, parallel with Kearns, if it's gonna be put on the west side as well. So it would wrap those two sides. I'd be, I'd be willing to consider participating in that if need be. That's it. I just wish everybody well. I'm pledging here to help as much as I can to make the best project possible, and I hope it works out.
Thank you, yeah. Great, thanks. Okay, anyone else?
So I'd like to address something that Mark just said, and that was. You indicated that there was two occupants per room. So the occupancy of the building will be somewhere between four hundred tenants and four hundred and fifty tenants, correct?
Correct.
So I just want everyone to be on the same page.
Yeah, so th- there are scenarios where like a one bedroom may be a single adult, so, or two bedrooms, two single adults, so it it doesn't always max. We don't have max occupancy in every unit, so it could be less.
I got you, but the max occupancy of the building is over four hundred tenants. Four hundred individual tenants, so everybody's on the same page.
And, okay. Mr. Chairman.
I think I was the odd one out, um, when I spoke about the open space, um, because there's other comments. And I guess my comment was more, I obviously love open space. Um, was more that if I had to choose the lesser of the two evils, because I do agree with the public comment that like fifty feet seems high, especially for that area. Um, but maybe when we tour, we can get the balloons and then we can maybe get a feel for it, but just based on the visuals, so. Instead of height, I was just thinking wider or some variation, because it seems just like a large mess on the fourth floor. And that was really my comment. Um, and also because I feel like we have so much wonderful open space, I'm just like, how many people are gonna sit in this little? Area of open space with these two massive buildings, and so I'm just like, aren't you gonna go around the corner to? The rail trail or something, would just be why I was saying. In this specific instance, I would choose. Wider over higher.
I agree with Commissioner Hall.
I would, I would agree with that as well in this, on this particular.
I just have a question about that. What what is the um? This question for staff, um. What is the height restriction in this um, in this zone?
The zone height is thirty-five, correct?
Correct.
And then with the A M P Ds, we we gave an exception. That was part of how to get these to to pencil out.
Yes.
Um, which is forty, forty-five? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's still within the L M C, right? I'm just saying, I'd choose a different part of the L M C to go for.
There's no exceptions being asked, yes.
And I have been asked by um, my uh, group. The E M F study, uh, what sort of, what what do you, what would you like to see there?
I would, I would defer to Commissioner Johnson, because I think that he probably has more knowledge about this type of thing uh, with his background.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's it's, so it's telecom, but it's still, we we get. E M E reports um, that we provide to property owners and jurisdictions that show the measurements, so it's prepared by a. Professional consultant that will just show the variations, most likely, Rory, it's gonna come in at a fraction of the recommended level, right? So, um, but I still think it's important to have this study on paper done by a professional consultant. The, you know, just any future litigation with the city, this will protect us somewhat, hopefully. Um, that's not my purview, but I can recommend consultants, um, but there there should be some widely available to you. To just, you know, generally, they're like a a ten, fifteen-page report. Uh, that just show where the levels are coming in and they'll show kind of how they're they're tapering at height, so this will be kind of opposite, like with the. Cell tower, you're going from a hundred feet and it's radiating down, so from. Wherever the transmission lines are emitting, they should be, should be able to tell us how they're radiating. And how they're hitting and when they hit that property, what levels they're at. So I guess that's a long explanation, but there's plenty. I don't know if that made sense.
No, it totally makes sense. Um, we, we had a study done and and I think that when, when this packet got passed along, some of the exhibits did not get attached. But we did have a, it wasn't a fifteen-page, it was a one-page, uh, but. We had the guy come out with the with the reader, but we we will go ahead and commission a formal. Study for this and get you the information that you're asking for.
Yeah, that'd be good. I just didn't see it in the packet, I apologize, and I, I asked, um. The planner to provide it and. Let me just double check, but yeah, that would be great.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, unless there's anything major, I think you guys have gotten a lot of feedback tonight and have a good idea on what we'll be. Looking for, and I know you guys will be coming back with a lot more information to dive into in the future, so. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, all right, I'll let you guys go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
We deeply appreciate your time.
Okay, next, we have the moderate income housing plan and report. Love the housing team.
Good evening, commissioners. Uh, Rhonda's gonna be pulling up the presentation here, so while she works on that, I'll just take my two seconds. Little name tag. Uh, and just congratulate you and thank you for all your public service and especially for your support of affordable housing over the years. It's, it laid the foundation for where we're at today, so we really appreciate that, so.
Thank you, Jason.
So, um, she's still bringing it up, but I can kind of start with the presentation here and um, just start off by, you know, tonight, we're, we're looking to um, present our first draft. Of the moderate housing plan, um, and we were here with uh, the planning commission in June. And kind of talked about some of the changes that happened at the state level, um, over the last couple of years. Um, so, there we go, perfect. Uh, and so, you know, we we do have one slide really quickly, just to just talk about that, and you know, obviously, this started. With uh, the House Bill four sixty-two, which um, was an up update to um, the Senate Bill thirty-four that was passed a few years prior. Uh, big changes obviously being the the due date um, being moved up from December to October. Um, and then the, they they've updated the strategies or refined the strategies that they're. And then the they they've updated the strategies or find the the strategies that they're asking the the towns uh and municipalities to to look into. So I think the one thing I'd want to back up just a little bit and say that, you know, Park City is at an advantage here. We've been working on affordable housing for a long time. We're ahead of the curve. Uh, and so a lot of the strategies that they've they've suggested, you know, we've been working on um and will continue to work on. So but, you know, we're in a lot better place than um some other places that, you know, really haven't addressed affordable housing or hadn't had a need to necessarily address it to the last couple of years. So um, you know, that puts us at an advantage for sure, so. Um, but as far as some of the 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 requirements that uh this uh House Bill four sixty-two brought forward. Um, you know, obviously, that any town that has does not have, sorry, um a fixed uh gateway transit system, meaning, you know, a rail system or a um bust rapid transit, I believe, is the other definition that's associated with that, are required to provide um to address three strategies that the state suggests in their plans. If you do have one of those fixed transit systems, then you're required to uh have up to five strategies. And we're going to go through today um the strategies that we're going to um be targeting as far as with our plan. But um really, the outline of the plan doesn't change dramatically, and I just but I wanted to bring this slide up just to give you an overview of how the plan is outlined. You know, it's a five-year plan, and um we just most recently had our needs assessment upgraded, which is required by the state every five years. And so that's why every five years you create a new plan, and so this is our five-year plan. But every year, we will come annually to the planning commission to update the annual portion of that, meaning what items, uh, strategies and action items are we looking at to to complete over the next year? And what strategies do they address as part of the state plan? So um, so that's what we're going to go through today. Some of the other things that we are asked to include is some of the demographic details um of the city itself. Uh, the needs assessment, like I mentioned, um, and our projection for need over the next five years. And then um to get into the actual strategies, and and really, the state wants to start to seize progress, and that's what this is just building upon. You know, like I said, the the Senate Bill thirty-four and trying to get more accountability to municipalities to make progress moving forward on affordable housing. Fortunately for us, we've been, we have been making progress, um, and so we're in a better position. But with that, I'll turn it over to Rhonda to go through. Oh, uh, so, yeah, the um, I mean, the other benefit of this is that, you know, the the state does um allocate more funds um to the Department of Workforce Services to actually employ a person that actually is going to oversee this. They hadn't had that in the past. And so um it's going to help us a lot to have a direct contact with the state as far as who we're reporting to when we have questions. They also try to will keep us informed of any changes uh that in the requirements. The state was was hoping to have all of the requirements that they wanted to see in the plan by July first. We received an email this morning with the new um requirements and additional requirements. Luckily for us, they're mostly to the information regarding the Democrat uh demic- graphic uh information that they're looking to have, so um it's not necessarily going to change, uh, it won't change. The proposed uh strategies or goals or action items that we're looking to accomplish over the next year, so. Um, and for today, really, what we're looking for from the planning commission is to to really take a look at what we're we're proposing as far as these action items over the next year and uh give us our feedback. We will be returning to you um in August, the end of August, to look to make a recommendation to the city council. But today is really more of, again, with a work session, more of an open feedback time for you guys to look at what we're proposing and then uh provide us with feedback. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rhonda.
Can you help me out one second?
Yeah.
Give me an idea of what the demographic details are looking for, incomes and age and.
Yeah, so the the exactly, yeah, so actually, the the first slide here, Rhonda can.
Okay. Basically, the state has created some very specific categories of demographics that they want in the plan uh as background for our goals. And it is not written that way just yet, so you will see a different demographic description based on what they are requiring in the August twenty-fourth meeting, for the August twenty-fourth meeting.
But likely, we're not going to look like a redheaded stepchild to the state.
Oh, absolutely not.
So how is that going to affect the funding?
Affect the funding?
The workforce, the workforce.
Actually, what affects the funding is our strategies and how we're progressing on the strategies we picked. So that's why that's the bulk of the discussion this evening is our goals and strategies. And um, that's what the state is going to base future funding on.
And again, like I said, the state's looking to see progress, right? So if they can understand the demographics of where you currently are, like a snapshot of, you know, such as how many residents do you currently have living in full-time residents living in your town, what's your housing inventory look like? You know, and they ask that at certain AMI levels, where are you at at thirty percent AMI versus sixty percent AMI? They want to see that, and then that they're going to track it, so that's why they ask for that information in the report.
So basically, real quickly, this was all in the staff report and in the uh working draft. Um, I just want to point out that demographics, you see, sometimes you will see different numbers associated with total population, total units. And it's because there are various sources where you can draw these this information from, so locally, we've looked at assessors data. So we have better numbers, like thirty-one ninety-three is the actual assessors data of permanent uh residents, year-round residents. Whereas if you looked at the American Community Survey by the Census Bureau, that number would be something like thirty-three seventy-seven, I believe, is what they've projected. Our, so I just wanted to give you. It's not that we are throwing a whole bunch of weird numbers together and we don't know what we're talking about. It's because in some cases, we're using different sources. So our permanent posh population is around eighty-five hundred. Number of individual units, I've seen nine thousand to ten thousand. Occupied by permanent residents is thirty-one ninety-three. That's one demographic I'm most comfortable with. And vacation and vacant properties is around fifty-eight hundred. Just point of reference, this has been fairly consistent over the years, thirty-five percent are permanent residents. Thirty to thirty-five percent are permanent residents and seventy I mean, sixty-five to seventy percent are vacation properties. Our commuting workforce is over twelve thousand people commuting into Park City within city limits for their jobs. Eighty-eight hundred of those come from outside the county. Our goal in the past has been to make sure we're housing fifteen percent. Right now, we're only housing fourteen percent. Inventory of units. Six hundred and fifty-one currently exist. They're affordable and attainable. Two hundred and twelve owner occupied units, forty-three of those are attainable, a hundred and fifty-nine are affordable. Four hundred and thirty-nine rental units are all in the affordable category. And then I show you uh the income ranges for attainable is eighty to a hundred and fifty percent of AMI. So that goes all the way up to a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. And the affordable units, everything from thirty-five to eighty percent of AMI, so as low as forty-two thousand up to ninety-six thousand or ninety-seven thousand. And again, reiterating that fourteen percent of the work excuse me, of the workforce currently lives within city limits. Our affordable needs, based on the needs assessment um that we received in February. We are being told that we need eight hundred to a thousand additional units over the next five years to move us back into the fifteen percent of workforce living in town. We were at that about five or six years ago. We have followed below. It's also that I'm pointing out there are a number of cost burden households in town, five hundred and ninety in the rental category and three hundred and seventy-seven in ownership category. So the primary needs, and again, you'll see this in the housing assessment are for households earning sixty-three percent of AMI and below. So that represents seventy-six thousand for a family of three. So what we're proposing as a plan, the overarching goals would not change. And they are continue to facilitate the production of a mix of new housing units to meet the needs of local workforce and to maintain vibrancy and increase diversity of the community. Objectives for this would be to work with public-private partnerships to ensure that the new units being built in through development agreements are both rental, for sale, and seasonal units. Increase the diversity of housing stock, including including various unit sizes and types. Reduce and or eliminate municipal fees for affordable housing development. Create housing opportunities for aging, differently-abled and neurodiverse populations, and preserve existing moderate-income units. Goal number two. Make zoning changes and amend the land management code as an incentive for affordable housing development. Objectives would be change zoning on some of the city-owned parcels to where it's feasible. Help um with density and height issues and to get more units. Decrease parking requirements uh for affordable housing projects near public transportation. That's a difficult one, as was just talked about at Home State. But we've got to find ways to reduce park requirements. Increase height and density allowances for affordable housing development. We've begun working on that with the AMPD and will continue to explore ways to do that. Goal number three. Enhance housing assistance programs for city employees. We, the staff is proposing proposing that we buy additional units to expand our rental assistance program into long-term options for city employees. Study the viability uh of the current housing allowance program as it stands and make changes as necessary. The housing allowance program for city employees who live within school district boundaries hasn't changed for thirty years. So it really is time to look at the viability of that. And increase mortgage assistance program to meet current market conditions. Goal number four. Explore new tools to retain permanent residents and prefer preserve community vibrancy. We would do this through the completion and assessment of our Pilot Live Local Program and adjust or expand to increase the number of permanent residents living in Park City. Also, explore new programs such as the Buy Back Program for existing housing stock and deed restrict for permanent residency only.
So in your packet, um, in the staff report, there are all the different strategies that were um proposed by the state or listed by the state that that municipalities can use were listed out. We wanted just to show you that um through the what we're looking at this year in our annual plan, that we'll be addressing um six of those strategies. Now, remember, if you, you know, we're only required to do three. Um, and so um you know, so we're pretty excited that we're we're exceeding the amount that that they would ask for, but it is goes along with how much progressing on affordable housing and how aggressive we are trying to be with affordable housing, so. Um, with that, we'd like to get into our this year's plan. Uh, and what you'll see here in the next couple of slides is really start off the goal that we're what we're trying to address, and this will, these will relate back to the goals that Rhoda just went through. The state strategy that's associated with that, and then um the actual action item. Um, if it's all right, I I'd rather, um, you know, I I could reread all the goals and the strategy, the state strategy that goes with it, but I'd just rather go through the actual action items so you guys can see those. And or or hear those, and then we can talk about those as well, so. One of the first ones that we're looking at as far as a strategy, and this does go into um looking at um increasing the mix of affordable housing or new units uh and in maintaining vibrancy is to look at the property that's located at five sixteen Marsack Avenue and develop a plan on how we can um to um rehabilitate and preserve that and maybe even increase the amount of um affordable units that are actually available in that location. You know, we do have projected completion dates on that. They are projected. This is obviously, this is something the state's asking for us to do to set timelines for these, to make sure we're we're staying on track as far as how these these uh projects move forward, so.
Can I can I just ask real quick, completion is completion of built units?
I don't think that, no, no, the, I'm sorry, yeah, we we probably should probably need to rephrase this a little bit because the July of twenty twenty-three, that'd be amazing if we.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, no, I I think what we're looking at is just to as a plan moving forward of whether how we would do that. Um, you know, we've we've had one conversation with city council already, very at a very high level. Um, we're looking to come back and present more options to them and on what that is, so we'd like to see approval from the from.
That'd be more of a completion of a plan.
A plan, that's correct, yeah.
That's what that's what I.
Rehabilitation, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that. From a layman, it, yeah, reads like completed unit, so that's all.
So obvious, um, the next one, um, as far as the state strategy is looking to reduce um or waive municipal fees. We have a great opportunity with the private-public partnership at Home State to do that. Um, so we'll look to see um how we can reduce um or waive fees related to that project. There we go. Uh, next, um, it is um regarding um zone changes. Oh, sorry, I must have hit the button twice. I apologize. The next one um is looking at the use of the funds from the Lower Park RDA and Affordable Housing Bonds, um financing to begin development of the Home State lot. Obviously, as a public-private partnership, we will have to have, uh, the city will incur some costs that are going to be associated with this, that's still being negotiated. But that would come out of our housing fund, so the utilization of a housing fund that was created through the RDA. These funds will be used to help uh to forward that project along. Uh, and the next um is the city will evaluate incorporating senior housing and services into a development of a multi-use and multi-generational project located at thirteen sixty-one Woodside Avenue. Uh, this is early in discussions, but you know, looking to, you know, where the current senior center is and seeing, you know, we're looking at options and how we can create a multi-generational, multi-income uh multi-use development on that site, uh, and so we'll continue to do that. Next is uh regarding the rezoning um with the state strategy of rezoning for density um necessary to facilitate production of moderate-income housing. We are looking at um a possible partner, looking at the possibility of a public party or partnership um located at uh seven 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 zero zero Marsack Avenue, which is the mine bench property. That obviously, right now, is own recreation open space, and we require a reason to put um an affordable housing development in that location. Uh, the next would be to um look at uh as far as uh the mortgage assistance or employee assistance from municipality employees. Um, we are currently in the um process and hope to complete this year, evaluation of our existing policies, as Rhonda stated earlier. We have uh an outdated um I would, it's I'd say outdated, just uh into the fact it hasn't looked at for almost thirty years, but that, you know, we have a housing assistance program for our employees um that has not increased, uh, even though, you know, the price of housing has increased, so we want to look at that. We want to look at what other tools are out there as well. You know, could there be um additional um? You know, we've only had short-term rentals for our employees, more transitional housing for recruitment purposes. We want to look at more of some of the other communities, such as Aspen has done, where they've actually have long-term housing for their employees, as long as they're, you know, employed with the city, they get to rent out this facility. So it's not so much a six-month to two twelve-month uh period, right? So a lot of these people, that creates uncertainty, and and back in the day, that was fine, it was used as transitional because you could find something within that timeframe. Nowadays, it's a lot harder to do, so we want to try to get some security um and help with both our recruitment and retention of employees uh to help increase the housing stock for our city employees. And the la- next one, sorry, is um getting back to uh the Live Local Park City program, so our light deed restriction program, we want to make sure that's about to kick off. We're in the process right now of um taking applications uh for the advisory committee. We're hoping to have that program up and running by this fall, the pilot program. We want to get through that pilot program, which we anticipate is going to go pretty quickly. Um, a million dollars probably will go fairly fast, so we'll be able to go ahead and um go through that pilot program and then stop and evaluate what was went well with it, what didn't well, what changes do we want to make? Do we want to continue it? And so forth, so that that'd be our last goal, and we hope that that completed by June of uh next year as well, so. And with that, um, I just remind you that what we're really looking at tonight is for feedback from the the commissioners uh on on what we proposed here, that we will be returning at the end of August with the, you know, an updated plan that will include some of the stuff that the state now is asking us to include, but also with your feedback incorporated into that, so. We appreciate it. I'm opening up now for comments and questions.
Okay, I'll open it up to the commissioners then. Thank you, guys. You're doing a great job.
Okay, I'll kick this one off. I'm understanding that the state determined that we do not have a a BRT, a fixed road system. So I know we're shooting for it and we're trying for it. And according And accordingly, we only have to do three strategies. What is the reason we're doing six is we're planning on this BRT coming together in the near future?
I think that there's, well, of course, we'd love to see that happen. I I I think we'd like to see that happen, right? So this, it's preparing us to be ready for that kind of um jump if we needed to make it.
Do they require us to jump in those categories in those strategies increased?
Well, I think once you have an establish, once you have one of those established, that they would require, yes.
So they would, okay.
The the five requirement of the five strategies. So um you know, like I said, a Park City is definitely ahead of the curve. We've, you know, our plans in past are shared with other communities because it's one of the best ones. Um we do set the example and, you know, we're already doing a lot of these things and they just correlate with the strategies already. Um so why not include some of them?
I love being proactive.
Yeah.
And also, the state has stated that if we go above and beyond, we get priority for transportation funding.
Yeah, I re- I remember you guys, you guys brought that up to us last time, yeah, so I think it's fantastic.
So let's talk about the zone changes. I saw what you identified, I agree with all of them, and I'm curious as to why not the annexation property that we just got.
So I I can answer that. Um you know, I think that we were waiting to go through the annexation process before, and now that that's complete, we have started to work on looking at that property. It was just not included when we were drafting our plan here. Uh but know that, you know, that is as far as another possible project that would look to rezone, that could be one of them as well.
Let's keep going, let's be, let's be proactive, let's keep.
Well, and I, I love your enthusiasm. We're trying to make sure that we can, this is for the next year. We will need goals in the future years as well, so yes, we will definitely look at that as well.
Great. Um are you seeing deed light applications? Are we open and are we actually seeing any of that?
We're not open yet because what we need to do is establish the advisory committee first, and that's done through the mayor. The mayor appoints that um with the advisement of of the city council. So um the application period, actually, I could let Bron jump in and as he's now heading this program up.
Yeah, the application period for the advisory committee closes on August fifth, and we expect appointments to that committee the first week of September by council.
Thank you.
Kristen, you want to go? Or I went first last time, so I can go last this time in the rotation. Laura, Bill? I always have lots.
I'll not go last, how about that? I have the luxury of doing that, but.
Sorry.
Um no, I think, I I I think you guys are doing a great job, and obviously, we're looking at. The plan, we're not here to solve the problems tonight. We can give you input, you know, and I'd like to see this and that and. Um but as far as what's in front of us tonight. Yeah, I think you guys, you guys know what you're doing, you know? I don't personally have much to add, and I, I I wish I did, but I think that. I think it just shows that you guys are on it, you know, and you know what the city's, you know, goals are and, yeah. So that's kind of where I'm at. I appreciate what you've done and, you know.
Can I ask a specific question?
Yeah, absolutely.
As a person leaving the planning commissioner, is there anything that you'd like to see? That's not on this that you would like to see us maybe?
You know, I was, I I, yeah, um I would say. I, I, I was reading through the HB and, you know, the. All the different um strategy or I don't know what you call strategies. And and I've always said, you know, uh anything we can do on ADUs and helping provide those on a small scale as well. And, you know, I'll disclose, I'm working on, I'm working with someone here in town. On an application for uh an ex, you know, well, we're still determining what we can do. But it it was a little just interesting to me to see the. The limitations, I guess, in some regard. Um especially with the detached and and so we haven't determined what we're doing, but it was interesting to me to see that, oh, we can do a detach. We can't do a detached unit on this particular property, but we can do an attached one. You you know, and I, you know, so I would say just really looking at the code and anything. And then in addition to the AMPD, you know, I know it's still new. But I would say, let's keep looking at that thing, you know? I know we recently had the film studio, they wanted to come in through the AMPD, but they determined it was just not going to work for them. And I'd be curious to know exactly why, and is there something that that would have? Got them over the finish line, you know? And I, you know, again, having them come before, I think it's fantastic. I think we'll hopefully see more of that. Um and then my only other comment. Um is to stay aggressive and get more aggressive, to be honest with you. I, you know, it's nothing that we're, we're not, we're not lacking, but I I do feel the city needs to. They gotta keep pushing, you know, because especially with economic conditions, it's. We're not gaining ground, and I think I said that last time, and I'm looking at the numbers eight, eight hundred to a thousand. Well, how many years ago was it that we set the goal of eight hundred? Well, so that tells me we're actually losing ground, e- even though we're doing a lot. It's not anything that any of us are not doing, it's, but hopefully this AMPD and stuff, that really accelerates things, so. Just say, stay aggressive and think outside the box.
Let me uh mention that at your August tenth meeting, you will actually be looking at what your priorities for land management code changes will be. So that's one chance you will have to rank uh priority for working on some of that. Some of those future changes.
Yeah, and I would say even combing through and just looking at the the different zones and the loud uses and anywhere we can just try to just loosen it up a little bit to to facilitate more units, you know? But you guys know how that is, so that's all I have is input, and I appreciate you asking me that, you know, being my last opportunity, so.
Um I can go, um. Copy what Chair Philip said, yeah, I didn't realize that we had that for August tenth, so I feel like a lot of mine were like, I just want to focus on LMC amendments because I feel like that's our wheelhouse. Um like something from the excerpt, uh like ADUs high on my list, I, it wasn't on the. Strategy in this, and I would love to see that because I feel like that's. A low hanging fruit with for somebody and also it's private dollars instead of public money. So if there's a way and and one of the things for like item R was waiving the ADU fee if I know Natalie Reynolds or something like that, so that would be great. Um. Maybe we decrease the number of minimum units to trigger affordable. I think it's eight right now, maybe ten. Yeah, for M P Ds, maybe we go down to like three because it's like our footprint here, we have like smaller M P Ds, I'm not M P Ds, smaller complexes go in. Or maybe we increase the acquire requirement for affordable when you get to a certain threshold, so maybe it's like a sliding scale. I'm open to whatever you got, but I feel like being echoing what our chair said, just being way more aggressive. Um because I feel like the two mechanisms for us to do that from a land management code perspective is. ADUs and the M P Ds, right? So. Um and then also echoing what our parking, or sorry, our consultant said so many years ago, it's the parking. So just figuring that out.
Yeah.
But thank you, it's like, obviously, I could talk about this all night, forever.
Commissioner Susa here, I'll weigh in. Um well, following up on what Commissioner Hall just said about the parking. It it does seem like it, this is always the crux of of uh these, these affordable housing units and and. Reducing or eliminating park requirements to incentivize the developers to build. And I just um. I have friends that live in affordable housing and um the feedback I get from them is that. The the limited parking in those developments, and yes, this is an anecdotal um comment. But the limited parking in those developments creates a lot of tension between in that community. Because people are always fighting over parking spots. So I'm just wondering if the 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 further elimination or further reduction or elimination of parking spots. I understand how vital it is to keep that to a minimum to incentivize developers, but I have to, I I, I think that the city has to also uh. Consider what type of community they're creating um if if um if they're reducing parking that much. Um so I have a concern there, and I just wonder if there are other ways to go about, you know. Possibly subsidizing some of the costs of the parking for the developers uh by the city to um incentivize them, you know, to build a project. Um without that concern of um of of the parking requirement. I, I don't know, I just think that there may be other ways to approach it um rather than um so being so drastic with respect to the parking. So I, I know this kind of long winded, but um I have that, that's the feedback. I feel like we don't get that or the housing group isn't getting that that kind of feedback from residents or um. Because all we ever hear about is incentivizing the developers by, you know, reducing or eliminating parking. We don't talk about, you know, the impact of that on people that actually live in these communities. But that's one comment, and my other comment. Um and this is another kind of general uh comment is I don't see anything in these strategies about um. Incentivizing our uh resorts to um. Provide more um. Units for um their employees and. Um I, I don't know it, what kind of strategy can be, you know, we can come up with there, but I think that it belongs here somewhere. That there's a strategy to sit down with the resort operators and um. Um incentivize them to provide more housing. Those are my comments, sorry, they're kind of uh. Not more specific, thanks.
So I'd like to jump in and just give a story supporting what Commissioner Susa just said. I I also know people living in um some of these affordable, entertainable units. And they've had uh in the past couple of years, they've had one parking required by the development, of course. And then they've been able to get parking on the street from City Hall. This year they got denied, so nobody in the building is allowed a a street parking. And exactly what Commissioner Susa just indicated really created a lot of problems for the existing building. So I don't know if they got them mistakenly in the past or things changed or what happened, but this happened in the last ten days. And it's, it's not a good situation. Once again, it goes back to what are we doing for these, you know, underserved people that we're desperate to put in for the diversity we desperately need here? And it comes back to quality of life. If we check the box, well, there's, there's major problems with this. And what we just saw and just heard is, you know, you're gonna have four hundred and twenty five maximum people in a building with a hundred and thirty parking spots. And that's without mitigating all the other situations. So yeah, there's got to be a a a city coordinated solution that we're all looking for. So the developers don't even have to put a hundred and thirty five with four hundred people. And that's what uh I would hope that we're doing, and you guys are working with transportation and parking every single day. Because that's the answer.
Yeah.
And that will give us all a better quality of life.
Yeah, I I exactly, that's exactly what I was going to say, Commissioner Gomworthy, is that, you know, this is a coordinated effort. The parking issue really is beyond, it it goes beyond housing, and it really ties more into the, you know, a lot of the transportation planning. Uh and providing transportation options for other, for people. And, you know, gas prices definitely have helped um to spur that conversation, maybe and help curb a little bit the the uh. The behaviors of of people, but uh we need to address it more systematically and holistically to your point. So we have, we are in communication, we're actually working together with planning department and transportation planning. To look at um identifying more appropriate places to develop density based on trans, the future transportation plan. Um so trying to stay in line with what their 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 plans are moving forward and how they're going to expand. Because you wouldn't want to put housing in a place that does not have access to transit.
Yeah, um I'll just follow up what you and Laura said. Uh I know of several people who live in non-affordable places that also just experienced that where they didn't have, they did not get their city permit in Old Town. And so I also, I mean, I feel like that just goes to like, it's not trying to single out this type. As like, oh, well, we'll just give this exception and like have them have a parking issue. It's a parking issue for everyone regardless of how much it costs to buy your house. And so it's just an old town or a Park City problem, right? So that's kind of, I I don't know what the solution is, I'm hoping that we can have a holistic transportation, active transportation plan. But I don't think it's like a, we're trying to just shift the burden to one group of people.
I agree, but certainly they feel that way at times.
All right, well, let's see, so um. Specifically what's being presented on this document, um a- any, anything else you guys could think to that to ask the commission for?
I just wanted to know, Commissioner Johnson had anything to. I don't think we've heard from him yet.
No, I don't, I don't really have much to add. I mean, I think I agree with most of the comments said. I, I, I struggle with goal number two, right? Because I, I just struggle with the eighty percent AMI that we're stuck with. I mean, I, I would love to have more teeth in the future to bring that down to a, you know, below sixty percent level, looking at the chart that was on page fifty six of the package, just. A lot of people aren't going to be able to afford the mortgage on the eighty percent AMI, so anything we can do to. When considering parking reductions and and that and height exceptions, you know? Anything we can do to to get the AMI down and add some teeth in the future is, is really all, all I have to say about it. I think that's my only really comment to add.
I agree wholeheartedly. In two years, that sixty percent AMI is going to be a hundred and twenty thousand, you know, so it's just, we're skyrocketing, so.
I live in affordable unit, and it was, we we barely snuck in eleven years ago uh qualifying for our mortgage at the time, so. Um I understand personally how hard it is, and I'm sure it's going to be only more challenging in the future.
I agree. No, it's, it's a fair point, and we appreciate that, you know, as we look at AMI, you know, AMI is who is the average median income for people that live here. It doesn't address people who work here. And so, you know, there's been conversations, obviously, at the city council level, looking at workforce wage and how we address that and and peg it. You know, AMI is the standard, so it's really tough, you know, when you talk about federal funding and everything, because that's how they do it, they base it on AMI. Um we're in a tough situation, we're in a a high AMI area. Um and we just need to, you know, through our policies and, you know, code and everything, we need to look to see what's the appropriate AMI for us, you know? Even though the rest of the the world may define it, uh you know, affordable at eighty percent AMI, maybe, maybe it is sixty percent for us for now. Uh you know, so we'll continue to have those invest, those uh conversations.
Yeah, and I love, I love that we're paying close attention to the working class wage because that really is what it boils down to, we all know it. And because they're the ones that we need to keep the city running, you know? And and a lot of the employers are feeling the pain right now, I mean. Okay, um unless there's anything else, I think you guys are good and.
We appreciate it, we'll see you in about a month.
Yep, them.
Well, them.
I have to throw in the last comment.
Thanks so much.
It's been a pleasure working with you guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um let's see. Let's take a, uh let's take our break now, and then I think we can get through the rest of the evening, so let's take five minutes. Okay, let's resume the meeting. And next item on the agenda is 517 Park Avenue Plaid Amendment. We have Planner Anant.
732 Crescent Tram is the next amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, I skipped where?
One more work session?
Oh, it's at the top of the pages. It's getting cropped by my-
Okay, great.
Uh, 732 Crescent Tram.
Well, good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Planner Alex Anant and I'm joined by Martina Nelson, who is representing the applicant from-
Welcome, Martina.
And I'm just going to tee up the, um, give an overview of the application. And then Martina will give a presentation and introduce the rest of her team. And then hoping to take commission questions. And I don't know if there'll be any public input, but that's the agenda for tonight on this one. So this is an application of, for a property that is comprised of five separate parcels, all of which total 11, 11,457 square feet. And the applicant is proposing to combine these parcels and then subdivide them into three separately developed lots, but all with one common driveway with access off of Crescent Road. And just, I want to note that the Crescent Tram pathway runs through this property. And that public pathway must be preserved with a 15-foot easement in favor of the city. So, um, in my staff report, I included the purpose of the HR1 district and I'm not going to read through it. But except for the first line, to preserve the present land uses and character of the historic residential areas of Park City. The rest of my presentation really consists of maps. I have sort of an overview of the neighborhood with the subject property being located here off of Crescent Tram, which is really an extension of 8th Street and connects up to Empire, which then turns into Lowell. This, um, this slide shows pretty much the same thing with the property outlined. You can see the, the surrounding lots are all pretty small. Most of them are 25 by 75 standard old town lots. Here's a closer view of the subject property showing the five different parcels that make up this property. I, I believe only one of them is large enough to, or maybe it was two, I had it in my staff report, to support a single-family house on their own, which is the reason that these parcels need to be combined and then re-subdivided. Some of them are below the required size.
Can, can I ask a question while you have these maps up? Can you go back to that last slide? So the 802 Empire Avenue subdivision, and then you have this. Who's the property owner in between that space there?
That is owned by the city.
Okay. I thought so, but I just wanted to confirm that.
Yep. And we can talk about that later. So if we were to extend the Crescent Tram pathway with a set of stairs, which has been talked about and requested by the neighborhood over the years, that would likely go in that greens, in that space owned by the city.
And we dealt with that when we were handling 802.
Yes, it was a condition of 802 that there be room and the owners not oppose it. And it does appear that there's frontage and plenty of room on that parcel.
Okay, thank you.
So this slide is from the surveyor, which basically outlines the shared driveway that would access Lot 1, which is currently improved with a historic house. Lot 2, which is in the carved in the middle, and then Lot 3, which would be the rear house. This property did historically have a second house on it, which was adjacent to the Cooley lot. But that burned down a couple of years ago and was not rebuilt. Back to weight size. So this slide shows basically the, the footprints of what could be built on these lots. But of course, with the shared drive, you do lose a little bit of space. So, you know, that's some potentials, not necessarily what would be approved. These lots would have to go through likely a steep slope CUP either through the planning commission or administrative, depending on the lot size. And they would also require historic district design review. So there would be further looks at what gets developed. And that is not what we're looking at now. What we're looking at now is just the subdivision into three lots, just to clarify that. And this slide shows sort of a steep slopes analysis. And you can see that a lot of the proposed lots are colored purple, which is greater than a 40% slope, which is considered a very steep slope. So a significant amount of excavation will be needed on these lots as they are developed. Potentially some retaining walls or using the house as a retaining structure. The proposed lot sizes are outlined here on this slide with Lot 1 being the largest lot and Lot 2 and 3, which I note are fairly consistent with the neighborhood lot sizes. With the average lot size or just a little below the average lot size, but they are very consistent with the median average lot size in the neighborhood. So I think the issues to consider for the planning commission, there's sort of the pros and the cons. The issues are really how to preserve the historic character and integrity of this residential area with two lots versus three lots. So the planning commission or the planning department has sort of floated the idea of two lots on this property. And I'll go through why in a minute. Or potentially the planning commission could indicate limits of disturbance and maximum house size on these lots. So title subheader shouldn't be in there. But anyway, so historically there have only been two houses on the site, which I mentioned earlier. And staff has some concerns with development on these steep slopes because of the amount of excavation. There's not a loss of, there's not a lot of significant vegetation, but they would be removing some of the bush and there would be a loss of open space. Additionally, access onto Crescent Road is a bit of a concern because it's very narrow and steep and it's right at the bend. And it's a two-way road. So six houses, I'm sorry, three houses versus two might be something to consider as well as the fact that there is that pedestrian easement on this lot. So there's the potential for conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles, depending on the number of houses and the intensity of the use as it's developed. But again, the proposal does comply with the HR1 zoning requirements in terms of lot size. The future structures will require steep slope CUP as well as a historic design review. And again, the lot sizes are fairly consistent with the neighborhood and meet the minimum lot size requirement of 1,800 square feet. So those are the issues that I would like the commission to consider as this goes forward. This is just a work session tonight. And I think the applicant is looking for feedback from the commission on some of those issues. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Martina to introduce her team and present the rest of the project.
My name's Martina Nelson. I'm the licensed land surveyor. I'm the owner of Park City Surveying, a local land surveying firm. I'm here for, to present this platform work session and I'm here to answer background questions because I have deep knowledge of the- and I'm here to answer background questions because I have deep knowledge of the parcel because of extensive work that our, our firm has done on the boundary surveying of these properties. So we want a work session to get your input on our proposal. We're not asking for special treatment, in fact, we don't want any special exceptions for height, footprint. We don't want special treatment. What we're looking for is interpretation of the land management code as it, as it might relate to this project. So our team is composed of myself, the applicant, Tony Hines of Wasatch Holdings LLC, Architect Bill Van Sickle, and another representative for Tony is Heather Feldman. So all those folks are on Zoom and can also help with questions. So with further ado, let's get our little PowerPoint slides going. I'm going to breeze through these slides, I'm not going to read from them, it's mostly pictures with colors that will help us in our discussions.
Okay.
Okay, next slide. Do you want me to just tell you? Okay. This is an old historic photo that Tom Peake gave me when he owned the property. He took some old historical photos, and in the rear of this property is the old house that has since burned down. 175 8th Street. The house in the foreground is what's known as the Yellow Historic House or 732 Crescent. And this is just a different vantage point, it shows you the steep driveway, the historic houses on the right. The old, on the left side, you see a blue house to the left of the driveway, not in the rear, but to the left. That is the Cooley parcel, the Cooley property. This gives a better overall view of what's surrounding the project. So you can see the Crescent House in the foreground, the Cooley House to the left of the driveway, and in the very rear, the Keensley parcel. That's the big blue house that fronts on the ski run. So that's background, okay. This map might be one of the most useful ones online. This is a map of the parcels as they exist now, and I just made them different colors so we can talk about them and revert back to this slide. This is existing conditions, steep topography, there's the asphalt road where Crescent tram makes a big hard right-hand turn. And then you already saw this, so we'll breeze by that. And then the footprints in blue are the proposed, just a preliminary footprint for an idea. The yellow footprint is the yellow existing house.
Is, is the blue footprint a function of the lot size or just a conceptual?
It's a.
You know what I mean, is it a maximum function of the lot size, or is it just what might be?
It's what might be.
Okay, I just.
Now, the architect has done some preliminary house plans, and in fact, the setback lines and property lines, this is actually, this scheme is actually, not scheme, this plan is actually very similar to a three-lot subdivision that Tom Peake had envisioned with John DeGray before he sold the property to Tony Hines of Wasatch Holdings. And so this, those footprints are concepts.
They were really with what the step back.
Correct, yeah, we're using the LMC code to generate these five-foot, 10-foot, so on setbacks.
And they really have no regard for, like, a steep slope, like, how much excavation you would actually have to get, because they're purely based on setbacks.
Yeah, we're regarding that, and in fact, as a land surveyor, I stake out houses on steep slopes in Old Town. And so I understand the work involved, the disruption to the neighborhood. So yeah, we, we understand there are significant steep slopes on this lot.
So it looks like Lot 1 would have, based on the setbacks and everything, could potentially be larger, right? Or is it, or what am I meant? Because you guys, you guys had said it was, it's kind of based off the setbacks.
Right, let's go to the next slide, because that shows the, that shows the concept of a driveway, the shared driveway. And so this next slide, if you see some kind of triangular hatching in there, that, they're going to be, need a shared driveway. And then the blue, kind of a dogleg or elbow shape, that's the envisioned walkway improvement. So as people go behind Kamala Hazelhurst parcel, and then through our, over and through our driveway, and then up Crescent Road, or you know, someday a new set of stairs. So the blue dashed hatching is the concept of where the walkway would be. If you're familiar with 654 Woodside, the Crescent tram walkway goes right over a person's driveway. In fact, it's improved, it's actually very nice, I have a picture of that if we need to share that later. So that Crescent walkway, we need to honor that, of course, we're going to honor that, there's an easement there. But the whole end result would be a finished driveway that's much gentler and smoother than it is now, with a walkway going across the driveway, just like on 654 Woodside. Okay.
This, we. But that, but that sidewalk over that, that, over that person's driveway is for a single-family residence, not for three, right? At 654?
I didn't quite understand the question.
At 654 Woodside, where the sidewalk goes over someone's driveway and, and works, it's, it's not going over three people's driveway, it's going over one person's driveway, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And can you just clarify if the yellow house, if the, if Lot 1, if the proposed footprint for Lot 1 includes the little yellow historic house?
Yes, Commissioner, that is the actual footprint of the actual yellow house as it is now.
And then there's a.
There's a porch, yeah, there's a front porch, old wooden dilapidated front wooden porch on the north side of that house.
Is that porch historic, or is it an addition to? Have you guys looked at that yet?
During the HDVR review, but regardless of whether the porch is historic or not, that house would have to be retained.
Right.
Potentially receive an addition that is secondary to the existing house, but that house will remain.
It would be, in the future, I think it would be nice to just have a better understanding of the, what is the historic home? You know, because I know a lot of the time they get additions, there's parts that aren't, you know, just to, just so that, I mean, we basically understand that the complete structure, whether the porch is included or not.
John, the porch is historic as well.
It is.
Yes, there's a back portion that's been added on, that I don't think is included in the, in the plans, but there's been a number of different additions, but the porch is original and historic.
Thank you, Director.
Just, just getting back to my question, is the little yellow house included in the proposed footprint on this slide?
Yes, Commissioner, it is.
Okay.
And next slide. We've already seen the steep slope, so we can breeze through this. These are some renderings that Bill Van Sickle has prepared for us to give you an idea of the, of the size and shape of the conceptual homes on these lots. This is sort of an oblique overhead view, the historic yellow house is in the right-hand side of your photo.
Okay. So that shows it lifted with a garage underneath.
Correct.
But again, the idea is you're not looking at the houses now, you're looking at the subdivision.
Correct. Correct, this is just, I thought you might want renderings, and so I put them in. This could totally change depending on opinions and our plans and eventual houses, okay.
This helps us see at least the mass.
Yeah, and this slide is.
Way to look at it, right?
Thank you, I knew you would want to see them. This helps you realize how the houses would be built into the hillside. Significant excavation, yes, final grading, yes, okay. This would be from the Crescent roadway looking into the project. This brick pattern we have is just a concept, it could be whatever we need to decide to, whatever you decide to prefer.
Something, something that just popped into my mind too, is looking at, I believe in, in this district, no greater than four-foot variation from original grade. Is that part of the code in this, in this zone, right? So original grade, when you, you, your final grade has to be within four feet of, of original, is that correct, Planner Anant?
I think so, because Bill Van Sickle has gone to actually kind of great lengths, especially on the historic house, on the north side of that house, to make sure the house is terraced and four-foot walls. If you kind of, it doesn't really show it this, yeah, look at the tan, behind the yellow historic house, you'll see the tan house. That would be the new addition under the rear of the yellow historic house, you'll see terracing there. Does that help you?
Yeah.
Why is that, why is that significant?
Are you?
To comply with the LMC.
Yeah, because they, the LMC states that a final grade has to be within four feet of original grade. And just making, you know, as I look at this, I don't see anything that wouldn't necessarily comply from what I see, but again, this is just conceptual.
Yeah, these are concepts. But yeah, the idea for the project is to follow the LMC and not ask for anything special outside of the LMC. Of course, there are provisions in the LMC, if you need higher than a four-foot wall for safety or retainage, then you apply for a special permit and go through the process.
As it's designed, we, we plan on only four-foot walls, or four-foot change any place.
Okay, thank you.
And this may be the last slide. Yep, so that is it for my slideshow, you've been here already a long time this evening, I'm here to answer questions, I'm here to get your input and your feedback.
Okay, yeah, no, and I appreciate that, and that is, you know, part of the work session, and I, you know, I, I, I understand you guys are looking at this and you're, you're looking for us to help analyze it at an early stage. So I'll, I'll see it for, for that, and I appreciate you coming in and instead of just trying to ram something through and say, this is what we want, so. With that being said, I guess for me, one of the big, obviously the big topics is going to be two homes versus three homes, and we've seen that, you know, multiple slides. And that's something that would be interesting conversation, I could look at it both ways. Right now, I could, you know, I could look at it as, you know, you currently are allowed, or you could currently put two homes on there. The downside to that is you're probably going to end up with two larger homes that may not fit in scale with the neighborhood. But then the three smaller homes would probably even fit the rhythm of Old Town more, but then you have additional impacts of, on Crescent tram and the entrance and all the other things. So I, I, I don't know, I'd be curious to see, see if the Commissioners have any input there.
Yeah, I can go, or if Laura or Bill want to go, or?
I mean, that's, that's obviously one of the biggies, right?
Yeah, so I have, well, it's interesting that the first house in that corner burned down, because I'm interested in like the fire access with that being on that corner Crescent tram, and then having that extra curve into the driveway, how far it's setback, how wide the driveway is for access. I know it has to be a two-car turnaround, but I think, especially with the interface of the surrounding environment around there, I think that's an issue that definitely needs to be addressed, making sure that there's adequate access for fire. The, I agree with Commissioner, or with Trip Phillips, I think the, the difference between the one versus two, I feel like the, making it into three separate lots will unfortunately probably increase the amount of excavation that has to happen, possibly. It's so disruptive to the environment up there and the neighbors. And the, I don't know, I just, building into those very steep slopes, I have a hard time with, but if you're going to put two larger houses, I, yeah, it's a hard kind of difference to, to separate. I agree with everything else in the staff report. The sweat path analysis, that vehicles can get in and out, that they're pulling out in a forward-facing manner. The easement for the walkway and the steep slope CUPs. And then just also having to make those driveways wide enough also pushes the houses further back to increase the excavation area. So again, all my concerns with this, the very steep slope and how much land disturbance there's going to be.
So I agree with Commissioner Vandine and everything she just said. I am very concerned about the steep slope, obviously 40% is extremely steep. Very difficult during construction and the effects on the neighborhood. And also, it's 40 feet plus, so what is it? I mean, does it go to 50, does it go to 60, I mean, is it really straight up the town over there? So 40 feet plus is like the end, but what is it really? So I'm very concerned about the slope over there. I'd like to know what it is. The width of the driveway and the slope of the driveway, I'd be looking at that to make sure that every technical aspect is, is required, as you say. And obviously, there's a width requirement as well as a slope requirement. So that's about it.
I can go, or Laura or Bill?
I'll go. So, I, I, I like the sort of suggestion by Alex earlier that, that the Commission consider only a two-lot subdivision and creating a maximum, maximum building footprint and limits of disturbance, define limits of disturbance for those properties, given the steep slope, the, the amount of excavation, the, the access over a Crescent tram, and maintaining the character, the historical character of the site. So I think that two houses is appropriate here for those reasons, and, and that rather than have a concern about two large homes, you know, the Commission can consider an appropriate-sized home for the neighborhood on these sites, I think that would be appropriate here. Those are my thoughts. My other thing, perhaps, consider a condition of approval restricting nightly rentals in these properties, given the access onto Crescent or 8th Street. So, those are my, those are my comments, thanks.
Kristen.
Oh, and one, one last thing, one last thing. Of course, I'm, I've, I'm a, I live in this neighborhood, and I've been advocating for a connection, a stairway connection for years over the site, and I think that would be considered as part of its approval too, thanks.
Is, I, I would assume Crescent is considered a substandard road? Right? I mean, it's safe to say. I don't know, is there an actual, like, designation? Do we have like a, a, a map of?
All of Old Town?
Yeah, I don't know if that's an official, like, determination that's, that is ever made, but I, something you think I would know by now.
Yeah, we, we actually did map Crescent roadway.
Yeah.
From 8th, actually all the way up to Empire. And in the yellow, the yellow portion of Crescent roadway that you see is, what is that percentage, Alex? I'm not a legend. There are some steep slopes on Crescent roadway. It's so, so to answer your question, parts of Crescent roadway are probably substandard.
15 to 30% slope.
Yeah, so yellow is 15 to 30% slope.
I mean, it's almost more appropriate as a one-way than a two-way road.
I agree.
Yeah.
And what is standard at 10? It used to be 12, right, now it's 10?
I, I don't want to answer that right now, I'd have to check with engineering, but I can do that for the.
Yeah. So that just gives us an idea of how steep 40-plus means.
Well, I, I guess I was kind of asking that question because I would agree with Commissioner Susser on the rental portion of that, similar to what we've done up in Sampson Avenue neighborhood, because it is the substandard roads and the impacts. And so I, I would also be in favor of, you know, creating some nightly rental restrictions. I know in, in Old Town, it is appropriate, but maybe not here.
I agree as well.
I'm still on the fence on two versus three, but two is probably more suitable. Two is probably more suitable. In my mind for, and mainly because of. Just the additional impacts of a third home and vehicle, again, tying that to the. The substandard road.
I'll go. I agree with everything that Commissioner Susser said. I would be. More in favor of the two lots since that historically has had two homes and because it is a very steep slope and also because. Though the lot three is a very small, like point oh six acres is like a pretty small. And I think with the additional setbacks, having that additional area between the three structures just adds so much more excavation for this specific site. And then I just wasn't sure if it's fifteen or ten feet. That I saw. For the pedestrian walkway.
I had a conversation with our open space manager and there is another portion of the trail that is. Dedicated is fifteen feet for the city and he said that really sets the standard and that's what he would like to see for the Crescent tram. Roadway, not that it can't be a driveway and but that. The access that's dedicated to the city should really be fifteen feet with.
Okay, and then. The non-exclusive easement. So are, is the city approving all improvements within that space? So let's say there it's not. For the fifteen feet, there's no obstructions. It's essentially just. Pavement for the driveway, which is also pavement for the. Pedestrian walkway, or? How does that, the mechanics of that work?
Great question. The answer to that is historically, this easement was for pedestrian for a walkway. So in the legal descriptions, it's legally described as a walkway easement. So it doesn't really say non-exclusive utilities easement in the legally described recorded deeds. It says walkway easement. Does that help?
Okay, so for example, like you couldn't put a tree in the middle of the pedestrian walkway and obscure the access. And then I assume that there's. Some of the places within Old Town, like it's it's confusing. You're like, am I on, am I trespassing or is this a walkway? Like, it feels like I'm walking on a public right away and I'm in someone's driveway. Is there something about like signage that's like this is a public walkway or there's public access? Can you?
Absolutely. In fact, our plan is to make the walkway appear different on the ground. With brick pavers, maybe some old historic railroad embedded into the walkway, something that keeps something different colored. Like one of my slideshows, something differently colored that helps people stay on trail. Stay on path. Does that make sense?
I mean, yeah, it goes both ways because then other people are going up down your driveway.
Right. I think in a portion of the trail, you actually can see the former rail track embedded into the pathway. I don't know how feasible it is. But it would be super cool to continue that. I also am not a developer. I have talked with Tony, the landowner. He's. Super keen on making a Crescent walkway appear differently so that people can see the historic significance because it is very cool. So he's keen on having his architect help design a walkway and of course with the city. That would kind of memorialize that stretch. It's just across his driveway, but it's important. And there is a sign at the beginning of the Crescent tram walkway off of Park Avenue where it starts, so.
I just comment that it is sort of a walkway to nowhere when when it ends on Eighth Street and there's no sidewalk and it's on a. Tight turn and there's no place for pedestrians to walk when they. Come off of there. There, that's why that connection is so vital right there and would be so great up to Empire or to Treasurehead, Trailhead.
Yeah, it really would, especially with, you know, after treasure and after, you know, these lots. To have a set of stairs that's a short step set. And to have it. All kind of a common. Theme, but kind of, you know, redone and memorializing that would be fantastic. And I could envision that occurring. That'll be, that'll be amazing, especially for the. The people in those neighborhoods to give them that access up to that trailhead would be. That would honor what the all the hard work we've done up in that area.
Our team totally agrees.
Yeah.
Put a condition of approval on the flat. The fact that eight oh two Empire subdivision I worked on with Tom P also had a condition of approval. That when and if the city stairs become a reality. Right now, they're not even on the books. It's just a concept, not even on paper with the city, but there are discussions. There've been public hearings and comments and public hearings. Condition of approval flat note, eight oh two Empire already has that in place. So it could. Absolutely happens on city land, the two adjacent neighborhood subdivisions. This one, you know, once it becomes approved in whatever format. This this applicant is totally keen on getting a stairway access.
Awesome.
So. You know, again, you're here to, you're seeking input and, you know, we're doing the best we can. Anything, I mean, being, you know, putting putting your foot forward. What else could you?
Your comments have been very helpful, so I appreciate your time. I know these meetings go long. One kind of general question I have. I, again, I'm not a developer, but I'm here for my team. Let's say we go two lots. With a two lot scenario, using the city's square foot ratio of lot size to building footprint, which I did. I downloaded that formula. I put it in Excel. I'm going to tell you a fraction of the exponent that took me a while to figure out. But the square foot. Formula, if we go with a two lot scenario, aren't we talking, you know? Potentially two very much larger homes. Would that not have the same, could not that have the same impact as three smaller homes?
Yeah. Yes, but I think that that's part of the. Part of, I think, what I'm hearing from the commission is. Actually limiting the the size of those two homes. So I know, I'm I'm sure the owner is not, you know, that's not the most desirable outcome. That doesn't mean we're going to limit them down to the. You know. The size of, you know, two of the three that you have, but. But it'll have to be analyzed. With the size of the homes around it so that we could get a comparison. I wouldn't be surprised if. Once that analysis is done that, you know. That it it can be demonstrated that it. Probably would be close to that formula would be. Consistent, but. You know, that's just that, you know, but I think we, I think what you're hearing is is that the preference is to two and even limiting the the. So it can't go up to that max potentially, but it's hard to say until we have that analysis.
Understood.
We have that. We have an analysis, Chair.
Yeah, I guess we do.
One of our team partners did this analysis already and found similarly. I mean, she did this analysis already on her own, too. She's a Realtor professional. I have a question.
Can I ask? Okay, so. So then let's, maybe we discuss that a little further. So do you, do you have those numbers using the the calculation? Of the maximum? I mean, I guess you probably haven't been looking at the the two house version as much as you have been looking at the three, but. You wouldn't happen to have that on hand, would you?
I don't have them on hand. Heather Feldman, can you chime in for me here? And then while I'll let you raise your hand so that Jer and the IT. Just unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so of course I would not be the one to do the analysis on if. It was a two lot versus the three lot. That's kind of a Bill Vancicle. Calculation. I will tell you that, you know, in Old Town, of course. At point oh six is is considered a very large lot because most of what you see out there is a point oh four. Where they're able to fit anywhere from, let's call it twenty three hundred to twenty five hundred square feet. On the homes that are around, which is what I pulled, you're looking at the small is around four thousand and some of those other homes are. Well above five thousand plus. So, you know, you would be looking at to be a similar home in that area. Quite large if there were two of them. And then you look at the impact of two large homes versus three. The, you know, any home of that size, you're going to have, call it minimum five, six plus bedrooms. So you will still have a good number of residents staying, whether it's family, extended family, whatever the case may be. I really feel like in this location, your impact with the cars is going to be less because of where it is. You're going to be walking to Main Street. You're going to be walking on the Crescent tram. Easement to the slope. So I feel like the. The people bringing cars will be fewer, especially as Uber and, you know, the other alternatives are out there to get places.
Okay, so.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I I disagree with that statement. I think. I I support the two lot configuration while. I do agree that, you know, there will be more rooms available. We're seeing more shared card use and less vehicles for people that are vacationing or. Whether they're permanent residents or not. So I think simply adding three units is going to add more traffic and it's too volatile of an intersection on Eighth Street there. For that. So just. I'm just going to counter it and let you guys know where I stand on it. It's two lots is is what what I would like to see. It's consistent with what was built on the property. There were two. Structures on these these lots previously. Let's stick with that. And then I just wanted to add one more thing while I have a moment. To plan or not, there was a. Comment in the packet about. Staff recommending to create an exhibit showing the significant vegetation so that we could do an analysis whether we needed the limits of disturbance or not. Was that addressed or not? I'm not sure if my. My internet's kind of spotty, so I'm trying to.
We haven't talked about that specifically, but. By me, you know, sort of, there are no significant trees that would likely warrant preservation, but. I I don't know the square footage of the, is it the shrub oak that might that gets protected? So I'm sure the applicant could put that together for another meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to see that for the next meeting. So I'll I'll let let myself go now. Sorry, I have spotty coverage, but I wanted to make my stance there.
Thank you.
Hey, folks, Tony Hines, if I could just speak for a moment, please. In in reviewing the the staff recommendations. I I believe the recommendation was either two lots or three lots with a consideration for a smaller. Size or footprint for the three homes. I heard a comment earlier about two lots with a size limitation placed on the two homes, but that that is not what. You know, reflected in the staff recommendations. Just wanted to point that out. So so and I guess that leads to a question, you know, is three lots with, you know, a limitation on the size of the three homes? Is that at all helpful?
Thank you, Tony. Kind of begs one of my questions for the commission. If we do a three lot scenario and reduce the size of the home footprints compared to what you saw on our slides. How much less is is enough? Like, because reading the LMC. Reading the LMC, I'm not really sure how much less of a footprint is enough. Is there, you know, because using the square foot ratio, we're, of course, we're within LMC. So I'm looking for guidance for like these vague. I'm trying to get things nailed down when I, in a world in which we may not be able to nail this down tonight.
Yeah, it's hard for us to weigh in too much without. Without full analysis, you know, and so I.
I think what I would recommend is the applicant has heard some feedback from the commission. I don't know if there's anyone here who wants to give public comment, but. Basically, they need to come back with their proposal and that's what we'll look at and fully analyze for a public.
Yeah, yeah, and you can you can bring whatever proposal you want forward, obviously, you know, so. Yeah, I think I think hopefully, you know, this has been helpful to you guys and. I don't know if any of the commissioners have anything to add. We're we're tight on our schedule. It's a work session. It's not a developed plan, so I don't. I don't know if. Public comment, you know, right now is.
Understood. I really appreciate the commission's time and we'll take these comments into consideration.
Okay.
Oh, I I just want to add before we close this one up. The formula for the building footprint in this area is a formula that is specifically designed so that if you have a larger lot, it doesn't necessarily allow you the. Proportional amount of enlargement. So it's it's designed to to keep the houses smaller regardless of whether you have a really large lot or not.
Right, the larger the lot does not mean if the lot's twice as big, the home's not twice as big.
Correct.
It's, yeah, yeah, and that's the point of that formula, correct? So.
I totally understand. Thank you. And yeah, that's how I interpret the formula. I mean, I. Plugged it into Excel, used your examples and haven't done any scenarios with this. I haven't had time, but. Before going too far forward, I would probably coordinate with staff again. Do a team model. Before we bring something more formal to you all, but I appreciate that, Director. Thank you.
I just, I have one final question, Chair Phillips, sorry about this, but. In looking at the steep slope. Slide on lot three. I'm just wondering. You know, if we approve the subdivision for three lots and then the steep slope. No steep slope CUP is granted for lot three. So that can't be developed, then then the applicant would have be restricted to building on lot one and lot two. Homes, you know. Smaller homes. They, it wouldn't be combining the three lots into two lots, which is what I'm, you know, envisioning. If if we go the two lot route. Alex, can you comment on that?
I have limited experience as a land surveyor in Old Town and I, just on firsthand experience, I know this is not every scenario. But I've worked with steep slope lots. And I've never seen a plat amendment that. That then could not get built on due to steep slopes. Deep slope CUPs were were looked at hard, very hard. The engineering was looked at very hard. The team partners I worked with were great, John DeGray and his structural engineers. So I'm not saying that might not happen here, Commissioner Susser. But in my own limited experience, I have not seen a platinum that was created. And then a steep slopes permit was not permitted. Does that make sense, Commissioner Susser?
Okay, yes, it does.
If I could speak to that for a minute, we we've done a lot of homes in Old Town over steep slopes. And we've never had an issue getting geotechnical reports and some of the civil stuff that we need to support the ability to build over those steep slopes using the home. As an integrated system to kind of step up with the lot and use the home to retain that. And so the idea behind it, even these ones with the three lots. Is not to really disturb the whole site, but to, you know, preserve the slopes on the site and build it into the hill and step with the hill as we go up. And this is something we've done several times. I did the homes on eight oh two Empire. I did one on eighty eight King where it was over forty percent. And we're still able to get homes that actually step with the lot and support that slope. So that that would be the idea. And when you, when you see the homes we've developed, they're designed to step up the lot as they go back to help balance some of that. And that's something we can get into when we go to the home side of it, but I just wanted to make everyone aware that that is the thought process we're using when designing these homes.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, that's helpful to, that's helpful to hear because we have heard from some developers that talk about stepping up and then. You know, the site is just leveled and and retaining walls are put in, so. It is helpful to hear that that's the intention here. So thank.
And and we did design the site with the idea that we're still following the land management where there is no cut bigger than. Four feet as it's finished out at the end. Obviously, we'd have to do a little bit of that as we step the home up. But, you know, the idea being is that finish grade and existing grade are within four feet of where they. Where they need to be. So we're definitely sensitive to that as well.
Okay, so I I'm looking at the agenda. We have a couple more items left. And I also, we allotted forty five minutes and by my calculations when we started, we've got five minutes. So I I actually. I'll I'll go ahead and take one or two public comments in case anybody has been here waiting just to speak on this item. And to be consistent with what I've done before. So I'll allow about five minutes of public comments if anyone wants to add. And if you could just keep consistent with. The high level conversation. That we're discussing for the work session.
John Staffshelt, I'll be very short. As you guys all know, HR one requires. Historical integrity that's. historical integrity that's compatible with size, mass and scale. Um, historical integrity at this location was two homes. I've lived there for thirty plus years. Maybe not everyone, including the surveyor here, uh was here when the fire happened on the one house that's completely gone. And uh how close it was to the next house, which was the Blue Angel Inn at the time, uh went on fire as well. Okay? And there was not access, even with two houses versus three houses through the back or the fire department to get there. I can show you pictures. I have them from the date. They had to go from the front, shoot over the top. It wasn't uh safe. It didn't stop a fire and it didn't stop burning the roof and the top story of the Blue Angel Inn that is next door, which we're calling Cool fourteen hundred, I believe. Anyway, it's inadequate. Um, the lot size request is incompatible with the historic neighborhood. Uh, the disturbance that will happen on the steep slope is huge. Uh, the limited limit of disturbance is extremely critical and it will exceed whatever they're saying now. Pillings will be required. Uh, huge walls will be required. They might say they won't, but they will because everything else on Upper Woodside that's happened, including another applicant here who's had their hole fall in next to him when they didn't do it. Beyond that, uh through previous uh approvals and plats, stairs are required through the property and maybe city land to the side, but there's no stairs there anywhere on this on this um on this design. The rendering is not showing a fifteen foot easement, which is required, which does not exist right now. Uh, the slides show a shared driveway, but the shared driveway is also an easement, which is a right away for the public, which should not be a shared driveway because it's a public right away, not a driveway for the applicant. The best case scenario shows a shared uh easement with a driveway for three homes, which encroaches on the historic right away. Uh, the access on Crescent Tramway, as anybody who knows anything about Old Town, that's extremely inadequate. The impacts of this would be excessive. Any conditions of approval that could be put in there should include, as Commissioner Seuss recommended, no nightly rentals, no driveway parking, which the city never enforces anywhere in Old Town, even if it's a requirement condition of approval. The impacts will be excessive. The stairs are required. Um, the historic Crescent Tramway that we discussed about how cool it would be if they put it in there, it's lost in the design. As we heard, it's a walkway to nowhere. And that is the way it is. If you walk up there tomorrow, you'll see. Uh, public stairs, as I said, were required in the plat and design. These have been ignored. And if it is approved, there should be no western access to the driveway above. Thank you very much for your call.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Oh, there are. Okay. If you get, uh, I'll allow uh extra comment. Um, just please be brief.
Am I being allowed to speak? Is that Jody? Because turn me off for a second. I didn't hear anything.
Yes, Jody, we can hear you. Can you state your full name for the record?
Jody Whitesides. And as a forty-plus year resident of Crescent Tram, although the address is actually on Empire, I can state with no uncertainty that this is going to impact Crescent Tram in ways that you can't even imagine. I remember when that house burned down. That was a mess. And in terms of what the city is doing right now with the N T M P and myself with Nestor and a few other of the residents here, we are currently studying the traffic patterns because I've been talking for years with council and other people to try and get Crescent Tram to be an entire walkway and Crescent Tram itself, a one-way street up from Norfolk Norfolk to Empire. And they're finally doing the traffic study to do this. To put three houses there is just insane. To put two houses there, if they're the same size as the previous homes, they're fine. If they're going to make them huge like the ones you just allowed to happen at eight O two and eight O six, where you split a three uh lot and a half into two three-quarter sized lots and fill them completely with homes, that's going to be a disaster. And the developer that currently did the development has been very very disregardful of the neighborhood covering us with toxic dust, pelting our homes with rocks. This is not going to be an easy process. Just ser- it's just not going to be an easy process and it's not good for density at all. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. And then uh one last comment uh from Deb Rempro, looks like. Deb, can you keep it to two minutes? You're me.
Hi, yes, got it. All right. Thank you, Commissioner, for letting me speak on this matter. Um, I echo everything that John Sashole and Jody Whitesides just said. As somebody who lives up on Empire, I actually use Crescent Tram uh probably once a week would be on the low side and four to five times a week is on the normal side. Um, and it is currently a trail to nowhere. Um, so I think that uh finishing Crescent Tram and adding stairs would be fantastic. I don't think anything more than two homes should go in there and their size should be limited. And um the Eighth Street or Crescent Tram, whatever you want to call it, is certainly subpar. I I believe that it was measured at one point to be less than ten feet in certain places, and I would echo the one-way um sentiments that Jody shared. And also tell you that when we walk up that or even if we drive up that, when you get to that hairpin turn that banks from the east towards the north, you, it's a blind corner. And with this shared driveway, if you can't like do a turn in your driveway to get out and be headed out straight, you're looking for a lot of uh potential for accidents and issues, and especially during the winter. Uh, that road is so narrow with the snow pileup and everything else. There's not enough room for snow storage and you run into cars that are sliding off, sliding down, sliding into people's yards and that sort of thing. So I think we need to be very, very careful um with any uh plan that or proposal that comes forward and making sure that it is safe and that it fits in with the neighborhood and it um builds on the Crescent Tram, the pedestrian accessibility and walkability that we want to ensure for all of our community. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I think uh that concludes that item. Thank you, guys, and.
Thank you very much. We will huddle with staff and our team and continue to work on this project. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Now into our regular agenda. Oh, I missed it. I miscalculated. I'm so sorry. Okay, we're we're going to keep pushing now. I'm going to stay on track the rest of the way. Um, next item is five seventeen Park Avenue. Um, we have thirty minutes allotted for this and I'm going to do my best to stick to that.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Spencer Colley, Planning Department. Um, I'm here uh tonight to present on the Bardley Platte Amendment at five seventy Park Avenue. Um, I'm joined by the applicant Jeff Love. Um, this is just to give some context to where the site is. Right here, I'm uh just off of Fifth Street and Park Avenue is where the property is located. This image shows the historic structure that sits um on two of the lots within uh it's Lot Four and Lot Five, which is five seventeen Park Avenue. Um, over to the right is Saint Luke's Episcopal Church. And over to the left is um a vacant lot. And here's just a rear view of the property as well. Um, so just to give a little bit of background, um, I've um highlighted the three lots that are uh part of this plat amendment. The red is a lot five, the purple is lot four and the green is lot three. Uh, this historic house sits on Lot Four and the south nineteen and a half feet of Lot Five. And that's what is five seventeen Park Avenue. Um, Lot Three is at one point contained a single family dwelling, which was demolished sometime between nineteen twenty-nine and nineteen forty-one. Um, and that is the proposed five oh nine Park Avenue. Um, the nonhistoric section of the covered porch and approximately three to six inches of the historic structure encroach onto Lot Three. Um, there is quite an extensive background with this property, so I'm just going to highlight a few of the um more relevant points. Um, and the uh background, complete background is is included in the packet. Um, so in May thirteenth, uh nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-two, the Planning Commission approved a two lot subdivision and adjusted the lot lines between lots five and six to accommodate an existing walkway adjacent to the church. Um, the meeting minutes indicate a condition of approval that states there will be a deed restriction placed on Lot Three as approved by the City Attorney's Office addressing separate ownership and additional development. Um, the next day, May fourteenth, the City Council approved the subdivision on consent. Um, however, the plot was not recorded and the approval expired. Um, in October of nineteen ninety-two, um, this survey number S dash nine eight three was recorded showing the removal of the northernmost five and a half feet from Lot Five um from the property survey. Um, and in May, on May third, nineteen ninety-three, the Planning Department sent a letter to the previous property owner advising that the lot subdivision approved in nineteen ninety-two was was about to expire. Um, and there's a handwritten note on that letter that says that the plat amendment was approved administratively, but we do not have any other information, no meeting minutes or any other approvals to show that this uh how that approval took place. So the uh Bardley Platte Amendment proposal is to remove the lot line common to lots four and five and to remove the porch encroachment on Lot Three and construct in addition to the historic structure. And the applicant has gone through um is going through the historic district design review process for that addition of the historic structure. Um, so the proposed plat amendment complies with the historic residential zoning district requirements. Um, Lot Three, the Lot Three survey shows a lot width of twenty-four point nine nine feet. And the land management code does take into consideration that um when a survey um of an originally platted historic park city lot, um, it does not meet the twenty-five feet wide by seventy-five feet deep lot size. Um, that the planning director can make a determination that the minimum lot size may be reduced up to twenty square feet if subsequent surveys find that the final lot dimensions are less than that and the footprint should be reduced in accordance with the lot size and no variation to setbacks allowed. Um, condition of approval five and seven um require development on Lot Three to comply with the land management code and for historic district design review. Uh, condition of approval six requires recording an accro- encroachment agreement to address the portion of the historic structure that encroaches onto Lot Three. Um, staff finds good cause for removing the lot line common to lots four and five because it present uh um present land use and character of the H R one zoning district are retained. No public street or right of ways vacated or amended and no easement is vacated or amended. Um, this uh plat amendment encourages the preservation of the historic structure. It ensures that future development will con- continue, uh contribute to the historic character and scale of the district. Um, it preserves integrity, mass scale, compatibility and historic fabric of the historic core as directed by the general plan. And we've included condition of approval eight, which is uh that the applicant will enter into an encroachment agreement with the city engineer and re- and uh for the portion of the wall that extends into uh the uh uh Park Avenue right of way and record that with the county prior to plat recordation. Um, the Development Review Committee reviewed this on July nineteenth and uh did not identify any issues. Um, staff is um recommending am- amending the following findings of fact. Um, the property is located at five seventeen Park Avenue and then the addition is the proposed address for Lot Three is five oh nine Park Avenue. Um, finding a fact number two will include that Lot Three is listed as a P C dash seventy-three dash B. Um, finding a fact three will include that um the applicant owns Lot Three, Four and Five, less than northernly five and a half feet of Lot Five, Block Five, Park City Survey. And um finding a fact twenty-five and twenty-six had some typos. Uh, twenty-five should read Lot Three, not Lot Two, and twenty-six should read a deck addition. Um, and that was misspelled. So the uh staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the Bardley Platte Amendment, hold a public hearing and consider forwarding a positive recommendation for City Council's consideration on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law and conditions of approval as outlined in the draft ordinance. And that's all I have. And applicants happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Mr. Love, do you have anything to add at this time?
No, it's pointless. Yeah, direct questions. Marshall King is Marshall King is from Alliance Engineering. If you have any questions about in respect to that, he's available for questions.
Okay.
And my attorney Brent Bateman hopefully is up on Zoom. He says he is, he's listening if there's anything that he needs to address, I guess, so.
Okay, can we make sure he okay.
He says he's listening, but I don't, but you didn't see him.
I don't see a, okay, Brett Bateman. All right. It'd be nice to see if we can't figure out just in case he is called upon. Okay, well, I'll turn to the commissioners for questions. Whoever would like to go.
I I have a, I've just a simple question for the applicant. Um, or possibly staff. I'm just curious about um that five and a half feet that's excluded from Lot Five. Um, has that become part of Lot Six?
Um, I think the short answer is yes. Um, the history is the Episcopal Church, which is Lot Six, owned five seventeen Park Avenue, purchased in nineteen eighty-eight. Tried for close to four years to come up with a plan to um kind of redevelop the property and they just couldn't get anywhere for the most part. So ultimately, they wanted to demo the structure of five seventeen park and the city got involved and Tim Lee got involved and there was a plan to prevent that from happening. The church was kind of a reluctant seller and part of selling five seventeen was that their walkway on the south side of the structure encroached onto Lot Five, and so they wanted to retain that five and a half feet. So that was part of the deal. Um, at that time was to retain the five and a half feet, and that was the catalyst for the plat amendment that was never recorded.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Um, I guess um further um with my comments, um. I guess my concern with some of the conditions of approval is that they they're mostly with respect to what can be done on Lot Three rather than what's being done um uh in adding on to the historic structure on um on Lot Four and Five, on the structure that's there on Lot Four and Five. And I just, I don't feel like they um they adequately um detailed um some of the conditions we'd like to see um with respect to um the addition to the historic structure. Um, I'm going to look for my notes to be more specific, but that that was my concern when I read over the conditions of approval. They mostly seem to relate to the lot lot new development on Lot Three rather than addition to the structure on Lot Four and Lot.
So I'm Jeff Love, the applicant, speaking if you can tell, but um actually not doing an addition onto five seventeen Park Avenue. Um, with the exception of adding a deck in the back, but we are not changing the existing footprint. The house is big enough for me as it is and we were just, we're we're working within the existing structure. It is a major interior remodel because unfortunately the remodel in ninety-two, ninety-three was not very good. It is a major interior remodel because unfortunately the remodel in ninety two, ninety three was not very good. But we are not doing an addition onto the house or adding any square footage.
Okay, that's helpful. And it, and it's thirty feet and you're not adding, my main concern was that you're going to add something that was also thirty feet. You're not changing the footprint of what's existing there. Okay, thank you.
Could a subsequent owner create an addition though, given the setbacks for the lot with the existing historic structure?
So they would still need to go through the historic district design review and that would restrict them from doing anything that is outside of what the land management code allows?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, at this point, I'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item. And raise your hand in Zoom or step up to the podium. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. So I will close the public hearing. And just turn to the commissioners if there's any further concerns or if we're in a place to proceed with staff's recommendation.
Chairman Phillips, I move that we forward a positive recommendation for the Bardley plat amendment to city council with consideration on September fifteenth, twenty twenty two, based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law, conditions of approval as amended in the draft ordinance. A second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Van Dyne and a second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you?
Aye.
Both of you?
Aye.
Yeah. Any opposed?
I'm going to vote nay because I, I I'm not comfortable yet with the conditions of approval with lots four and five. Nay.
Okay. All right, motion passes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And we gained some of our time back. Yay. Okay, let's see, I am having some technical difficulties here, but I think I have it working now. I think I got it, you know, thank you. I forgot to have the hard copy. Okay, next we have fourteen Iron Canyon plat amendment. Welcome, Planner Holly.
I'm just going to get promoted. You don't see me? I'm raising my hand. Yeah. What am I, am I under something weird? Cool. Sorry about that. Uh, it's not going. Should I log out and log back in? Okay. Commission length. I think it did it again. I don't know how to like, because it's not giving me an option.
I'm going to have to go to your Zoom.
Go into Zoom, okay. Thanks, Karen.
Oh.
I'm sorry, guys. Okay, so I have to sign out. Let's try this. Okay, I'm signed out now, but. Oh, here we go. Okay. You see me? Okay.
You now only have five minutes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it. I got this. I got this. I'll do it. Okay, so I am gonna share this. Here we go. Okay, thanks for waiting. So we're looking at lot thirty three, the Iron Canyon subdivision. It's a building pad adjustment plat amendment. I'm Planner Holly. So we are looking at a plat amendment for the Iron Canyon subdivision plat, which was reported in nineteen eighty three. It announced in the building pads on all these lots that there are four thousand square feet each. And through the research from the past subdivisions, it can be determined why the specific locations of the building pads were proposed. But it could be interpretive, or it has been interpreted that the building pads would at least like limit the disturbance of the lot outside that building pad. So keeping it to four thousand was like pretty clear to assume. So the applicant is proposing an adjustment to their building pad to accommodate the proposed new residence. And it's currently a vacant lot. So we are at fourteen Iron Canyon Court. It's in the single family zone and the sensitive lands overlay. For years, I just want to address the Iron Mountain Trail on the lot. So Iron Canyon, fourteen Iron Canyon has voluntarily allowed a use of for this access conditioned upon the understanding that when they're ready to build a home, that the trail would have to find a different access, which the Trails and Open Space Manager Heinrich Dieters is supportive of the building pad adjustment. And he's also looking into additional locations for the access to the trail. All right, so the proposed building pad creates just a longer pad first, kind of it going to the sides. The U S, like they both go over eight contour lines. So the original building pad goes seventy one oh four. The proposed building pad is just side shy of USGS seventy one oh eight, so four feet difference. It's staff kind of found that the significant impacts weren't being created. And so that additional mitigation wouldn't be required with this amendment. Since two thousand and five, six other lots have completed their building pad adjustments and they're all maintaining four thousand square feet building pads. We've got twenty nine, lot eleven, lot four, lot five, lot forty two and lot forty three. So staff finds this proposal complies with the single family zoning district, the general subdivision requirements outlined in fifteen seven point one. And then also with the S L O, there's no steep slopes on the site. It's not located on a ridge or in a view from a vantage point, no streams, wetlands. It's not in a wildlife habitat or interface zone. However, there is significant vegetation. With the building pads, it's, I wanted to update this information. Actually, there's, there's actually two less gamble oak and five additional quaking aspens that are going to be removed from the building pad adjustments. So a total of three additional trees that would be removed. And again, like kind of with the four feet building USGS elevation adjustment, staff found this could be mitigated appropriately, especially with COA number six, that they have had to replace the significant vegetation in kind. I found that causes plat amendment doesn't increase the area disturbance and it's consistent with previously approved plat amendments. There wasn't any public opinion and writings submitted at this time. Generally, I've gotten a few calls about the community being bummed about the trailhead being moved, but they understand that it's going to be, they're going to find a new option for it. So I think they're understanding. And so staff recommends the commission open a public hearing and forward a positive recommendation to city council on September first for the Iron Canyon subdivision lot thirty three, building pad adjustment, subject to the findings of fact, conclusions of law and conditions of approval. Thanks.
All right, fantastic. Good job. All right, commissioners? Questions? All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone from the public, raise your hand. Or step up to the podium. Hey, I'm not seeing anyone, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn back to the commissioners.
I have a clar- clarification question, sorry. I feel like after nine, I'm just like, yeah, not articulate. Anyways, um, so in terms of the Iron Mountain Trail, it's essentially like we hope to make a plan because there's no condition of approval or finding of fact. It's just a yeah, if I could give you a quick, that something works out?
Yeah, if I could give you a quick narrative, yeah, and Mark can do it.
I'm Mark Harrington, senior city attorney. Yeah, correct, because this was completely voluntary by these people before. There is a platted location. We can either use that as last resort or continue to look for an alternative to that. There was some conflicts with particular landowner on that location before. And city proposed some solutions and ultimately this property owner stepped up and provided a different solution. So we will either work it out in the context of the original location or find an alternative. And but it would be unfair to burden this property with further conditions of approval because they had nothing to do with the original dedication.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I feel like this is very common. I mean, this is a trail I've used, had, I've used most of my life here, but I totally understand that it's just trespassing.
Is the alternative, sorry, Commissioner Susa here, the alternative locations that are being considered, is it going to be in that general vicinity? So the parking will be the same or is it in a different?
Um, it could be any of the, not necessarily, the parking has been an ongoing challenge in that cul-de-sac as well. So that was, that was a separate problem that the city has worked hard to mitigate over the years, both in terms of on-street parking for the trail as a whole, regardless of its location. And so I think we don't, don't want to upset the progress that we've made over the last fifteen years in that regard as well. So I think Heinrich isn't going to for, close on any option. I think he's looking at both area options and the original location as well.
All right.
Okay, anything else, commissioners?
No.
All right, let's see.
Gives me great sadness to make a motion to comply with, because this does comply with the L M C. It just makes me personally sad, but I move that we forward a positive recommendation for Iron Canyon subdivision lot thirty three. Based on the findings of fact, conclusions of law and conditions of approval as outlined in the draft ordinance.
I second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hall and the second by Commissioner Kenworthy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any votes? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being quick. All right, the last item on our agenda, Founder's Place Development Agreement Ratification. Welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Rebecca Ward with the Planning Department. This evening, we have Bill Fiveash and Carter Lamb, the applicants for Founder's Place, joining us. And I will share my screen in just a moment. All right, so this development agreement is required for all master plan developments, which the Planning Commission on January twelfth of this year approved substantive modifications to the Deer Crest master plan development and a conditional use permit. As a review, there will be seventy eight market rate units, six affordable units, and then some accessory support commercial on the site and residential accessory uses. The context of the project is in the Deer Crest area and because it's within Park City's boundary, but it's also in Wasatch County. Some of the, the requirements that are outlined in the development agreement are also outlined in an interlocal agreement from nineteen ninety eight that outlines how the applicant will pay their building permit fees and impact fees between the districts and the jurisdictions. The Founder's Place Development Agreement needs to address ten criteria. I'm not going to go through those. Those are outlined in the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And in addition to that, there are five elements in the conditions of approval that are also included in the, the development agreement, including the transportation demand management, electric vehicle charging stations, sustainability requirements, affordable housing and phasing. So the transportation demand management outlines the homeowner association obligation to finance and operate a ride sharing service within the Park City area and also to encourage the use of shared ride services from the Salt Lake City Airport to the property. The electric vehicle charging station conduit and installations are outlined in the phasing plan as required for each phase. The applicant proposed the lead residential B, D and C multifamily certification. And so that's outlined in the development agreement as well as their commitment to low flow plumbing fixtures and prohibiting gas fireplaces and cooking appliances in residential units. And then the affordable housing mitigation plan was approved by the housing authority in January of this year, requiring six affordable units on site through the phases. And also this community benefit fee of point five percent of the net purchase price of each unit that will go into the city's affordable housing fund. The biggest change that is proposed is the phasing plan. The land management code does set an expiration date for master plan developments, two years from the date of approval. But that's if there's no construction that started. The phasing plan that was originally presented to the commission in January had the phases come, ongoing through spring of twenty twenty four. And the applicant is proposing to modify the phasing plan. It's highlighted in red text in the staff report, which would allow them, they've already submitted a building permit for phase one and the condominium plat has been recorded, but extending phase two to three years within the last certificate of occupancy of phase one. And then doing the same thing for phase three. So that would have a three-year window after the last certificate of occupancy for phase two. And as an update, the applicant has finalized and recorded all required affordable housing documents, the subdivision and condominium plat, as well as the community benefit covenant. And as I mentioned, the building permit is already submitted for phase one and we anticipate they have December in the, the the development agreement, but it will likely be issued much earlier than that. So we are recommending that the commission conduct a public hearing and consider ratifying the development agreement for Founder's Place. And happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you guys have anything to add?
Nope, just thanks for being here and staying late to work through this. We appreciate it.
Commissioners?
Can you go over the phasing? Sorry, can you bring that back up? I know it's redlined in the packet. And then I was trying to find it within the actual development agreement. I think it's on page three, but.
Yeah, would you like me to pull up the development agreement?
Yeah, I had the development agreement and then I was like, yeah, it was redlined in the staff report.
We, we did suggest, excuse me, originally since this is a twenty five year development agreement, that's the, the development code kind of indicates that it should be a twenty five year agreement. When we first read it, we proposed to staff that we have seven years for each phase. And staff indicated that that might be a, a long period. And so our intentions, of course, are to start construction now, work through the project, one phase each year for the next three years. And we would love nothing more than that for that to happen. But as we all well know, with the Arts and Culture District and other things, there are difficulties do arise and our market is changing. And so working with Planner Ward, we came back and suggested three years from the last certificate of occupancy of each phase. That way, if we do run into market conditions or a change in, in what the That way, if we do run into market conditions or a change in, in what the, what the market's accepting, it might go quiet, but, but we're trying to limit the amount of time that would in the development agreement. And if it changed, we would need to come back in front of staff to have any kind of modification to that.
I think that sounds perfectly reasonable and a, and a good compromise.
So the sunset clause would just, would, would do what if you didn't, uh, if you didn't perform within those three years?
You know, it, it's, it's an interesting concept because there's not a lot of, uh, indications in the code of what, what, what the penalty would be. Because I think the idea is that we've gone through this public process. The community has indicated that this is a project that's acceptable to them. And, and then the development code indicates that we need to have this agreement to, I think, to encourage us all to really understand what we have and not let, not let things get so old that we have to go back and dig through files and figure out how it works. But I think the penalty would be that we just need to come back and renegotiate it to, to extend it with a sunset clause of twenty-five years, because that's what the, the overall agreement is set at. I guess Mr. Harrington probably has a better, a better explanation than I do.
Yeah, but you can specify more clarity in that phasing plan if you wish as well to, if you don't think the the penalty's clear enough. And but, but I think he's correct. I think coming back to affirmatively ask for that extension is, is really where we'd be at.
These never end.
Yeah.
Yes, and well, the, the, the clause I'd suggest that you, I mean, you could potentially reference is the same clause in the, uh, plat section, which says you, you evaluate the plat extensions under no change of, no material change in circumstances or reason to revisit the development parameters and those sorts of things. Um, and it's a one-year request at a time. Then they can do it up to twice, and, and so that seems pretty, builds in some flexibility um, and some standards for those requests, if you want to be a little more firmer than the commercial, commercial reasonable language.
But that's at the twenty-five-year mark for the.
No, you could insert that into the phasing plan.
We can say after ten years.
Yeah.
We feel like a new application would be warranted.
Or if they don't meet, if they don't meet the three-year after the CO, and that, those are pretty generous. Because it's not three years from building.
Yeah.
It's three years from the final CEO of the last unit of the prior phase.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he built in some good flexibility for himself and.
Yeah, totally understand the flexibility and changing markets, but also understand that like we've been just been hammered with NPDs from like grandfathered and with no sunset clauses. And it's just a, an aggravating so trying to find a like meet in the middle.
Yeah, and the applicants always want to come back, cherry pick what's good in the old one and amend it. And always less parking, by the way. Am I missing something more?
Truthfully, the way I saw it was a five-year window for me to get each phase done. I mean, we're, I don't know if anybody knows how long we've owned the Arts and Culture District, but five years goes very, very fast when there's a change in the market. You know, it took us, we, we finished our last building in Empire Pass in two thousand and nine, and we didn't start another building until two thousand and sixteen. And I, for one, think it would have been a shame if we would have had to go through an entire public process and reopen that NPD to keep those buildings going, because it was designed kind of, in my sense, a whole and perfect community. It had a, we went through so much process that we knew what it was gonna look like. And for seven years, it sat with a missing front tooth. And, and I think now, I think it looks like it's a, a complete project, and, and we're gonna be able to enjoy that community. And we're not gonna have development in it forever. But if we would, if we would have expired all of those entitlements, we may have seen another ten years before somebody had the wherewithal to come back and go through another public process. And so to me, that was a seven-year window. This is a five-year window. I, I think, I agree with you. We do need to shorten this up and, and make sure we're revisiting it timely. As we know, Chair Phillips has been here for a hundred years, so he remembers the original one, but he's going away. So we need to be careful that we get, that we get the, that we re-review these documents in a timely manner, but not too timely. So that's just my personal thing.
What's a fair compromise, Bill?
I, I think three years.
Yeah, we're not talking thirty years down the road here.
And, and I guess one thing, uh, Chair, or Commissioner Kenworthy, is that it's also not a nine-phase project. You know, it is just a three-phase project, and, and, you know, it, it's absolutely in every ounce of, you know, Carter works till late at night, as you can tell, um, because, you know, these projects only work if we get them done quickly. And so anything outside of that, you know, anything outside of that probably does cause significant delays. But also, if, if we, if we're burdened with too much inside of that window, we, we run the risk of causing our own delays.
Uh, so if we're saying something like, I mean, you already have a building permit, and we're hitting the ground.
No, that would be, that would really help to make sure this gets done, is if we just all went upstairs and went ahead and signed.
By December eighth, sorry. Um, but if we're saying that, like, essentially, if you start, if you build a bit impotent with the, for the third phase within ten years, that's giving you like five years for phase one and five for phase two, then you would essentially be keeping your entitlements. But after ten years, we'd be like, come back and let's have a quick review of one or two years. It's that.
I, I, I would be in favor of more of a harsh, yeah, more of a harsh penalty at the end of those three phases. To say that it requires, you know, that an extension requires the, you know, a revisited substantive change to the, to the agreement, if that makes any sense. We, we did talk about that. We had, we, we had certain triggers in the development agreement that, that would have required us to come back as a substantive change, and that's a really high bar for us.
Yeah.
We don't want to come back under those circumstances ever. But after, but, but if we do have that kind of ten-year window, that seems fairly fair to me. And it, it kind of indicates to the community in the future that our intent was for this project to get developed. But it hasn't gotten developed timely, so now let's revisit it and talk about what else, what, what else does it owe to the community.
Yeah, I think we want to motivate you.
Yeah, but we don't want it to be punitive either and.
Yeah, but we also understand like the, yeah, it takes time and there's fluctuations, or it's, you know. Um, is there some way to amend that, Rebecca, to add a, a clause into, into the agreement?
Yeah.
So we can amend it on the spot?
Um, and it would be sub, it would be section three E. And we can add that, that ten-year timeline in there.
Yeah, so, yeah, so three E, instead of saying just that one line, something to the effect like, um, after ten, I, I don't know, Mark, I feel like this is your wordsmith help. How do I phone a friend?
Failure to adhere to the, uh, phasing plan by tw- twenty thirty-two with a when, what would the trigger be? It's, uh, building permit for phase three? For CO by.
You'd probably say phase two, because that way, like, if we, if we had a, if we had a hiccup, can I not say it out loud? Do I have to say it out loud? But if we had a hiccup in the next few years, and we, and our first phase pushed out two years, an extra two years, we would say that's, that's a reasonable slide. But then the third phase can't pass that ten-year mark. So the third phase must be, issue a building permit by the thir- by the tenth year, or it must go back.
No, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, third base.
Yes.
Perfect. Wonderful.
Okay.
All right, otherwise I have no other issues. Oh, I did have a question. Are the affordable units going to be sold or retained and rented? And if they're retainer, who is continuing to own them?
Yep, uh, Carter and I had a meeting with the Housing Department today on Argent, because we are about to deliver two employee housing units in Argent um, in the next thirty days, which is a great add for our community. Um, and we've generally used, because ours are inclusionary housing, they're on-site. We've generally tried to use them for staff that are employed on-site. So we don't sell them. We, we basically retain them and then rent them to the homeowners association's employees.
Wonderful.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone from the public, uh, wishing to provide comment, you can raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any, so I will close the public hearing and turn to the commission for a motion.
Phil or Laura have anything?
Yeah.
They've been silent. Are they still on? I can't see.
Yep, no, they're, they're with us.
Okay, sorry. Chair Phillips, I move that we ratify the development agreement for Founder's Place as amended. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Van Dyne, and I'll give that to Commissioner Kenworthy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any oppose? Okay, motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
That concludes the evening, so, uh, motion to adjourn?
Actually, I have one thing before.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess I just don't want to forget this for in our, like, staff communications next time. Is it possible to do the regular agenda first and then the work session as like our standard protocol? Because I feel like we just talk a lot during our work sessions, which is great.
Maybe the next chair can do a better job of.
Which is great, um, but I feel like the things that we're deciding on happen later at night when we're more tired. And I feel like those are the things that are the final decisions. So I just, now that it's on the forefront, I would have a preference for that if possible. I don't know if there's state law or something crazy, but.
It's a good question.
It's a great question.
People totally disagree with me.
No, I, I think it's a great question, and especially when we have three work sessions. I think, you know, sometimes we, often we only have like one work session, and then it's not as, and we have a really long, regular agenda. And I think that's why we've done it, but we can mix it up. We could look at this, you know, what's on the schedule and make that determination and run it, even run it by you all.
Okay, I just feel like more it's like at whatever, nine-thirty. I mean, it's not that late, but I'm just fresher at five-thirty for like the final decisions on like a huge development agreement versus just like kind of casually talking about like a plan to make a plan for affordable housing that we're gonna talk about at night.
Yeah, no, we can, we can look at, you know, each, I, I think what it would warrant is looking at each agenda for itself. Because sometimes we have had work sessions, like for example with PEG, where we've got a lot of community and engagement. We don't want to put that at the end, because then we'll make the, everybody wait until the end to be able to comment on it. But, um, absolutely.
Okay, sorry. Let's go give a.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sorry.
Bye, John.
Yeah.
Sorry, I wanted to say that.
Yeah, hey, what a better, couldn't be a better time to actually ask the question?